This conference will now be recorded.
I got is just kind of a let's start a conversation on all these points. And actually, since we've got Brad and Bill here. Oh, we're missing Jason.
Oh, you have a handout.
Oh, congratulations.
You know, I saw her one run like.
I don't know if you want to wear the hat, but you can have it if you want.
Her handout.
Yeah, I went through one.
And you're not going to.
That's awesome. Congratulations. Congratulations. What's her name?
Hit her with the door.
Oh, it's a bar.
Henry Wilder.
Oh, wow.
Sorry, that was Henry Wilder Ring. What did she say?
Three times.
Nice.
Good for the soul. Maybe tomorrow if Nato leaves me alone. Uh, me, like I say, while we've got both Brad and Bill here, one of the correspondents I've had and I've had all the years since we took it out last year and a half is the used to be a 15 minute parking spot where you can unload your truck. We did away with that, I think, just because we wanted more space.
Around the lake.
Right up here by the boat launch. What's everyone's opinion on that? I thought it got taken away, so it's getting reused.
No.
I hear you're too to bask.
Well. We didn't. Parking did it continuously, but the 15 minute parking spot, I think, used to be one spot further up. The sidewalk came through the middle. We lost that, so then they didn't have that 15 minute spot back this way. But.
That went away when we did the sidewalk.
Yes.
Well, the question is, everyone's still wanting it back. Do we put it back or do we not put it back?
Not in the same location, because that would have to be on the.
It would have to be closer to the pub.
Yes.
Pubs.
Well, I talked to Larry a little bit about it. We could put it up from like, say, seven to three, 15 minute parking for people who want to go up and use the boat launch, and it could go to regular parking. For like at night.
For like at night.
But or to be 15 minute parking all the time.
Or not have it at all, but I. You guys in the board, what's your pleasure? We don't have a decision today, but just something.
I don't know.
The one issue we have is we keep it 15 minutes all the time. Go to 15 minute parking. And then you have no other parking and somebody parks there, goes to the pub. You can ability, yeah, ability to people to, you know, because Billy's people take it over, they did their job. So that's what kind of they will leave it out. Can be, it would just be closer to the pub.
Yes. I mean, I get it. But what's the other alternative? Put your flashes on, park in the road, I suppose.
Which is what you do now.
I think it's a nice thing to have, is that well, because there's no other place to vote on the other boat. Now, and obviously, if you went over by the toboggan chute, by the time you dragged it down, I'd fill it up, it wouldn't be very convenient. So what's anyone's pleasure? Would you like to put a spot back in there and?
I'd go for it.
Living highlands right up here by the pub. Everywhere used to be, when we redid the sidewalk, that portion got taken out and we put it back.
You know, I'm all for it. I don't think it's enforceable, but it's a sign of keep some enforcement as best we can.
And I assume we take the spot, like when you pull in, be the one right next to it?
Yes.
Okay, let's why not? Give it a try, right?
Pink comes off, right?
Signs, yep. And I'm sure which order we take it, do you guys want to talk about one or two first? Want to talk about pot or parking pot?
Talk about pot.
Talk about pot?
Get over the hard one first.
Probably.
The, uh, so I said to you guys, I didn't have your emails yet, so I have to do that forward to you.
Yeah, but wasn't wasn't attached, but I pulled it off.
Okay. So, so basically. Yeah, you can see that you did that. So the New York State law is going to be where you can smoke cigarettes, you can smoke marijuana. So it's my opinion, I'm of the opinion that we should probably prohibit it on Main Street. That would be my opinion on our parks and any building property. But that's up to you guys as a board.
So you're at Stewart?
I'm sorry?
So you're at Stewart, just.
That's the next.
Well, that it has to be because you can smoke marijuana wherever you're allowed to smoke pot.
There's an article in Today's paper that the other towns, Tupper Lake's allowing the sale of it, and Cernick Lake's going to allow the sale of it. They think that there's a big revenue.
Yeah, there is.
Well, it's either that or.
Totally, it's definitely an issue.
Yeah. Who cares?
Yeah, no, I don't.
It's the public spaces, what we do.
So, so talking about the Village of Great Neck on Long Island in 2011 banned cigarette smoking on their main street, which is called Middle Neck Road, and it's 5.7 miles. And there's a thousand dollar fine if you're caught smoking. So. Well, or a good deterrent, so. Right.
Since, I don't understand this, you're not allowed to penalize anybody for marijuana anymore. So how can we penalize them for smoking?
Bill's workman's problem.
Right, it's all.
Yeah, but you're not even looking, they're prohibiting any penalties for marijuana.
You're not allowed to smoke on Main Street, you could find for that and similar to pot or tobacco, let's smoke.
Similar to an open container law, you're allowed by alcohol, you can't just pop go.
Yeah, I'm talking about the enforcement part of anything. It doesn't do any good if there's no penalty, that's enforceable.
Yeah, that's why I bring it up.
The way the law's written, it's like.
Is the open container law enforceable?
Yes, we do.
Is that a local law?
Yes.
The state law with marijuana, they want to make no penalty.
No.
It's not, yeah, we're not looking to penalize them for marijuana, but looking to penalize them for smoking.
Well, in public space.
In public spaces, right.
Not with your residents or your. Hope you bring it up.
That's on Thursday, correct? There will be a Q and A discussion. What's deemed a public space? Like, if you're on Main Street, you walk up Mars Road a couple of steps and then you can light up or?
Well, how specific do you want to be?
The whole of Mars.
Maybe we have to make a geographic law, like named streets, named sidewalks, named parks.
What Great Neck did was just Middle Neck Road.
So you could.
You could go and you couldn't smoke in front of a commercial building or a park, which we have those, we add those laws enforced now, New York State does. So it, we could very easily say, you know, from St. Agnes to Wise Guys. Yeah, which is our business district for all intents and purposes and claim that it's non-smoking.
Wouldn't be a bad idea to take a look at free next law. Janet, we do.
I would also vote to say that we do the parks as well, but the street. Otherwise, that's going to be the place.
Okay. So regulation of smoking in public areas, no person shall smoke any tobacco or other substance at the following locations within the Village of Great Neck. The public sidewalks along or within 125 feet of Middle Neck Road in front of the following, the Commercial Establishment, the Village Green, and the Village of Great Neck Housing Party. I mean, it's pretty, I mean, if you think it's enforceable.
I do. The thing is, though, didn't we have a conversation about, there was a dialogue off and on over the last 12 years about banning smoking in parks, and it just never got any traction? Maybe this is something that.
There's signs in the parks now that says no tobacco.
Is that only there's the little Jordans?
Yes.
It's a state.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, but before that, we, there was some reluctance, or it didn't seem to go. So this is going to be something that has to be committed to, I would think, on the village side.
Well, are we thinking at all, we want to go the step of no cigarettes smoking on Main Street?
Yeah.
I think what we're saying.
We can prohibit marijuana.
Right.
Prohibiting cigarettes. You can't both. The law is written, the way it's written, cigarettes are exactly the same treated to be treated as marijuana. Which is nuts, but that's.
Cigarette smokers, there used to be an outcast a little bit.
Well, you know, this is from 2011, no person shall smoke any tobacco or other substance. So, I mean, this was Great Neck.
Vaping?
We couldn't vaping.
So, and that kind of circles back into the discussion part of what Mark was mentioning. Zigzags, rumors, your late night watering hole, there's always seems to be a group established that come out and because there's no smoking inside, there always seems to be a congregation of people. How are we going to tackle that as well? Wouldn't be allowed. Well, I, I understand logistics, but I'm talking about the enforcement of the, and the consistent enforcement.
Because that's going to be perceived as.
Is it for enforcement? No, we would enforce it. It's the way it's going to be. I know there's always been discussion about if the Northwoods in sidewalk is building property, not.
It is, yeah. We're going to redo, that's part of the project.
So they would force them around back where they smoke marijuana now.
Well, you know, it's not very attractive. Well, it's not very attractive to see, you know, sunny and, I mean, they're all out there through breaks, cooks.
I'll like drink when I'm brought down the street.
Yeah, I, I.
I mean, this is a training ground for elite athletes. I think it's certainly, you know, a concept that we should start pushing. I mean, this is the home of gold medal winners. And why should cigarette smoking or pot smoking be allowed?
Well, did you talk to LPBA about it today?
I brought nothing. I have like the last three minutes of meetings, the Main Street thing went on so long. But I told people they'd email me their thoughts on it. There's a lot of people who are like, you know, obviously, nobody wants people lighting up on Main Street, but.
I mean, it's a motel. I'd love to be a smoke free canvas. I know the goal narrow is, but I don't have that club. The business I like, a little bit, you know, hurt my bottom line, I just don't have the club, I'm not that busy. But again, and so that's why I'm a little bit concerned of the merchants on Main Street, maybe the restaurants going to say, boy, we don't want that. Like, there are no.
Well, absolutely.
That's fair, because there are a lot of people who will go inside, come outside to smoke.
Well, and our Canadians, they, they have not seen we give off cigarettes yet, and so that's.
Especially our quarterback friends.
So can you make sure?
Yep. You know, it has to start with.
And can you get me?
Yes. We would. Mary Jane on it. She, she'd jump up.
I mean, if there's a basis, I'd like to get the visitor, Mark and Lake Plaza, smoke free public areas.
Yeah.
The number eight.
Yeah. Well, and what are public areas? If you're walking around Mira Lake, can you smoke? You smoke marijuana around Mira Lake?
We can only control what happens.
Well, but I mean, let's say you're in the village portion, are we just going to do the Main Street or are we going to be just like open container law? Sure, I mean, at some point you're going to.
They could be similar to the open container law if you do it that way. That's a local law, 1966, that brings it anywhere in the village, on a public street.
So we're not going to allow cigarette smoking either then?
If you choose, that's. I mean, maybe like, um, be a good resource to talk to in the future, both. You have to do both on Thursday.
It's a good start to the discussion. So you can't have a beer like in your street? Like, I can have a good.
You can like pull a lunch or a sit down. It really.
Some turn into straight or not.
Yeah. You know, in, in, in down, people breaking bottles over time, you know, create more of a hazard situation for other people to rent the beach and then smash a bottle and have to break one ground. Or like a glass.
What kind of workload would this play?
It's, it is what it is.
There will be, there is, I imagine there's going to be pushback and there will be some sort of aversion from people traveling. There is perception that we're strict, but I think that will fill in. It would be replaced by those who are seeing it positively. So there's going to be a give and take sort of negative perception, but I think it would be what people, I think it would be replaced by, you know, people have positive perception of the actions they have to take.
I mean, with the amount of families that are coming here now, walking around the lake, you just right now, 99% of them would be happy if there was no smoking of any kind, anything.
Yeah.
On any sidewalk. Because you see them now, with their people out there smoking, they basically walk across the street to get their kids around.
And it doesn't seem unreasonable to say, hey, whatever you do in your own property, your own house, it's not a part of ours.
We are paid from everybody else, yes, you can do whatever you want, but if you don't do it here, it'd be a lot easier to normally go there, Ross.
The only other suggestion that I have is maybe to put Michael DeSally on notice that, you know, a dispensary, we're going to have to put it in the land use code that it's, you know, conditional use in it. Where if the town decides that it wants to allow dispensaries, because you can have a dispensary, you know, by.
On Central Road.
Yeah, on Central Road, you know, so.
On Marshall Ground.
You've got to put that in as a, you know, conditional use.
So with the dispensary, if we were to do that, what revenue would come into that? Has anyone heard the numbers?
Maybe in the county.
We would make, I know there was the, the literature about us not having as much, you know, income. Coming, none of it would come back at all, the revenue?
What do we do?
It was 3%.
No, so 9%, so it's a total of 13%, but it's based on the content of THC, not the ounce that you're.
How potent is?
Right, it's how potent it is. So.
It's like maple syrup.
Some of it's $20, some of it's $10.
So on a $200 sale, you're making 26 bucks, the tax. The counties get two and the towns get $6.
The town gets.
The town.
So we don't.
Well, I don't.
But we, well, you're going to notice the difference between budgeting perception, between the two. But so we don't have any direct village, municipality receives no direct financial.
It was so generic, it says municipality, and I don't know how that.
Usually, we're not factored into that.
Probably not. Yeah.
Probably come up.
That's why I'm sure.
I would say it would have to come off between you and Jay, two, correct? Because we have that sharing thing, what was the, what the other component where we share, where we, it actually was inverse. We actually got the, we got the town's amount, what's this, 10 times.
So we got the perks.
Oh, yeah, that was the sidewalk, right?
The sidewalk, right.
Was it 700,000, 300,000?
It was, one or two thirds, and you got the two thirds.
I was thinking about, it was a, that tax or something where it's like, they get 1% and we get 3% or something like that.
We don't get anything with that tax.
Oh, we're pushed to go.
It all goes towards community development, correct? Which is why the community development director is supposed to be both village and town. Because it comes from solid income derived from village and town. Bill, what's your opinion on dispensaries, selling marijuana? If, if we borrow. Well, but if you borrow from Essex County, they're going to go to Franklin County and buy it. It's still going to be, or you're going to lose the tax revenue, the state's still going to make their amount, because no matter where, you're going to buy it somewhere. What's your opinion on that?
I still have the opinion that I don't mind my community.
You too. Take the way to make sure your community look.
So there's not, and I guess that's where I am initially, because even, and this might be the Republican party coming out, but if there's any money to be made, I can see how we can make a compromise. But if we're not going to even generate any revenue at the side, it's enough, why, why would we do it? Refund Essex County anyway. But Westport or someone else.
It's an interesting conundrum. Sure, because we're allowing liquor stores within the village that sell a substance. So now this other substance is legal.
And you can grow your own if you want to, you can grow six plants.
It's not like it used to, it's a different sort of situation, it's just it's.
Well, obviously, there's going to be a lot of discussion, well, I don't know, how long before they're talking about putting a dispenser? How, how long we have?
Eighteen months.
Yeah, okay, so you've got things starting to release. And so going back to if we do do a no smoking Main Street.
That's got to have a quick. There's no smoking.
Right.
That's an hour, we should have an 18 month issue.
So would it be Main Street parks and public areas?
Model that up to the container.
And check. Using Great Neck's law that says the truth.
So if you're walking down, not, I don't take the street, Kinley Street, go out to the lockdown street and smoke a joint?
Not allowed to lock down there, there's nobody there.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we're saying Main Street parks, I guess public areas covers all the streets, is that what you're saying? Okay.
Yeah, the problem with shooting around the areas, people are going to say, why didn't you extend it to my neighborhood? Either both. I don't think it's a blanket rule for everybody, it's.
We see a group of people coming out of, you know, a B and B, they're all carrying a beer, we say, guys, dump them out of the container for a light. And I suspect that will be the similar to marijuana all the time. I'm old school, okay, 30 years, I'm illegal now, it's legal, and I'm just old school. But I think over time it will be, hey, guys, can you put that out, smoke it someplace else and get that to your house?
Yeah, I think it's just the expectations you're setting from the, the community expected, except for the residents and guests.
I mean, I know, you know, there's a few fathers here, if I was sitting in the little league and somebody like that, they'll bomb us, we have to period it soon. So that's me.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything to say on that? Like I said, obviously, we, we've got some time to talk about it. Are, are, do you think, Peter, we ought to move right now on the no smoking?
Well, listen, it's great to.
Okay.
Some legal advice.
And we'll have to get Janet Paul.
Worth reaching out to someone in Great Neck, like a couple of businesses, like especially a bar or restaurant that's on there.
And is there existing a bar for this new phase of it? Does it? Yes.
We can find out, I mean, certainly we can check it and get it down there.
I'll reach out to the shit.
Great, I'll try to get some feedback, I'll try the restaurants, and it's like, herd and cats trying to get them.
I mean, it's pretty easy in daytime, as soon as it gets dark, it's not so easy. You know, people get stupid when they're drinking.
And they just get hungry.
Actually, the other thing, too, the animals, too, you're going to have people, you know, stand, you know, chat on. Who knows?
So that opens up another whole new game of words as far as penalties, so I don't know how you're going to force that one.
There's no way you can test for that. No, if you do blood tests, and that's what we do with the serious accident, but, you know, you have to submit some sort of test to suspect that there's THC in their system at that moment. And have to have some sort of evidence to back it up.
Is that the only thing you can test for is THC?
No, you can get a drug, drug enforcement recognition expert, and they can tell why you use different, you know, things. What drugs suspected, and then we test for that THC, you know, that's what the active ingredient is in marijuana, that's what we'll be testing for. It would come back as, you know, positive for marijuana, but it also stays in your system for 30 days, so you want to find out what that THC level is, what it was at the time, then we arrest them.
Kimball, anything you want to add on that?
We keep it mic muted.
I'm muted, but no, I don't want to add anything.
I, I think we, if we just treat it like alcohol and alcohol.
Or tobacco, what's that? Tobacco, you can, at this point, you can, but yeah.
Yeah, I'm with you.
The only thing with marijuana, we're going to want to, you didn't talk to us about, is making sure that all the positions, because we've just, just now, all employees of the departments have to be tested. That CDL falls under the federal law, but we're going to want the ones that aren't tested under the federal law, we probably don't want to have it a safety sensitive thing at any position that we deem safety sensitive.
You say you do that and never you don't.
Right now, every, every employee has to be tested, but when this law comes out, I don't know, it doesn't say.
Because federal is still a crime.
If you have a CDL.
Yeah.
So if you have a CDL, you fall under the federal law, but it should say, you know, our things, or at least in the village handbook, that any safety, safety sensitive job, which we deem safety sensitive, which would be anybody in pickup truck, tractor. Police officers probably are subject to random testing like we have now.
We have to amend the village policy to reflect that.
Something I should make a note?
I spoke with Janet about it.
Okay.
But I think that that's something I have to drop off before 15 months.
It works, my brother was a chef in California and it's been legal there, and it's just, they, they, it's become a way of life, but they treat it the same as like alcohol or, or drugs, they're just, when it comes to employment. Whatever you do on your own, when you're employing, it's like, can't do that while you're, you're working, can't have it in your system while you're working. I mean, the whole country is going that way, the NFL is easing on that, there's some, you know, additional benefits of it, so I can see that. Just a little surprised when you like did it so early, but they needed some revenues.
Great, anything more? Now? Did you talk about the Main Street project yet?
All we talked about was both, I figured I'd sneak that one in quick.
It brings us back to parking, parking fees, fines, and standing parks. Put you a lot of opinions on this, but who'd like to begin?
There's no shortage.
It's Mark, Dan did a lot of research on, so, you know, you want to start with number one, we'll shoot out through it.
Dan Keller?
I asked if I wanted to get Paul, and of course, I said I would, and I, Dan and I started having conversations, like, let me get some things down on paper. And he's done all sorts of research, he's read books on parking, and obviously, he lives about me, and he lives right in the middle of it. So he came up with this pretty thorough document here, which, I'm not going to go through the first parts of it. But he has some ideas for changes to the existing parking framework that I think are great. We can talk about fines and stuff afterwards. But he said, really, this is just to keep the flow of everything, because right now, what he's finding, parking permit spots in general aren't turning over that well anymore, because, for one, people are parking on it, and they're not supposed to be. But also, we have places like the house and some other vacation rentals who are basically parked there and the stuffs are turning over. Whereas before, we had all the short term rental stuff, you know, I would come to work, I would work at five. Someone gets home, who lived on Main Street, they get home at 5:30, there's a spot for them, and, you know, there's this whole nice circular parking thing. So, you know, we talked about doing one or two things, but set for it to work, we probably need to incorporate a lot of changes into it to get the, the flow of things back. And so, he has some explanations here. So expressly legalize overnight on-street parking from May 1st to November 1st. Making sure people know that it's legal to park on the street then. He said, you know, that's just going to alleviate a lot of things, you know, if somebody lives on the street, can go park their car there overnight, they go to work the next day, it's gone, and you're not worried about the permit spots anymore.
Until the construction is over, Mark, that's not a good, it's, I mean, not July and August, maybe, but before then, they're going to be using the driving lane to.
Yeah.
We can't have cars parked there overnight while.
I guess there's a lot of this stuff, too.
Yeah. I guess the first thing they can decide is our permits, and even a great idea to go forward with during the construction season. It's good if there's already the times where that, those spots are going to be blocked off and people aren't going to have access to them.
Well, the other, the other point on that is that, Brad, is that on regular summer, you need to get the street sweeper up there on a daily basis, and that's the purpose of no overnight parking on Main Street anyway. Is that what we're talking about, Main Street in this?
Right.
Finally, this is Main Street.
I think you're talking two issues, one is non-construction timing, which is what you're talking about, and then what we do now.
So I assume this is not enough, non-construction timing.
Right. Normal circumstances. Yeah.
So that, so my point on that is just that I had the, the street sweeper needs to get up there, and Brad could probably.
How often do you need to sweep the streets?
Last year was Monday, Wednesday, Friday, like I told you before, we went up there Monday, Wednesday, Friday, went down the parking lanes of Main Street. Maybe once a week, maybe once every two weeks, we go out, the leaf blower in the morning, blow everything out, but after we hold the buildings, we have to. That's the time that they go through there, I mean, I guess.
Is that when you do it is overnight?
Between 2:00 and 6:00 in the morning. We normally, they normally come in around 4:00, 4:00, you know, off of Main Street before 6:00.
Yeah, so talking about sweeping Main Street, that's what I was, you know, I had some feedback from people I wanted to bring up, but. Yep, so talking about sweeping Main Street, that's what else, you know, I had some feedback from people I wanted to bring up, but I don't wanna cut off.
Oh, no, so, I mean, that was his idea, was it's gonna alleviate some of those permit spots up there, if you look and just park on the street. And then this one, that no overnight parking ban rotation from May first to November first, rotating the lots, what do you think as far as, you know, I don't, for snow removal, the, the.
Yeah, so it's like, you know, no overnight parking Wednesday and whatever lot, and overnight parking Thursday, and again, the purpose of that is for the street sweeper to do that part a lot, so that's why it rotates, and it's not, no.
But is that.
When I tell you.
Yeah, but he's talking May first to November first.
Yeah, that, that's just for the streets.
Yeah.
But is, is that even, do we even do that now?
Yeah.
They do, okay.
So, so we, yeah, so we enforce in those lots, each one is a different night of the week, Sunday night is municipal lot, Monday night is the, what we're M B T lot, I think, and so they all, so you have a place to park each night. You may have to walk further to get to your, you know, residence, if you're living on Main Street, it's more for employees, and we do give people that work at zigzags or rumors on a normal, you know, they have an extra time, so we don't go out there at three o'clock or two o'clock and start taking them. Let their patrons leave, and then, you know, at four o'clock, we start doing it. But the purpose of that, of that rotation is so that they have an opportunity to park in lots.
You taking notes and wanting to come back to the recommendation?
Oh, yeah, I mean, like I said, this is, from someone living on the street, this is what his thoughts are of, I don't disagree with, so, with, too, because I lived down there for a couple years myself. Lines need to be repeated annually, I think that obviously makes sense, and that's gonna be alleviated.
Say that again?
Lines need to be repeated annually, so they have to.
Is the problem with that, state does the Main Street?
No, we do the parking, we do everything. We've been done annually.
Where, where did we run that the county was doing them?
The only thing that the state does on the Main Street is center line, they do a three-year rotation.
Now, what did the county do that we used to wait for two years ago?
That was, that was the other, that was the striking of the center lines and everything that we have in the village.
Okay.
Center lines and a lot of this stuff, now we pay it, because we were always on that waiting list, and sometimes it wouldn't get to us, so we've never, not yet, the, the main parking on Main Street and the crosswalks we've made ourselves, and that's been done annually for, forever. The only, the only issue with us is, like I said, our sprayer cannot spray the real line industrial paint, but the local owners can do it, it's heavier, states sit down, our little handsprayer can't handle that type of paint, so we have to use something that's.
Should we, should we look into purchasing something like that, so we can be self-sufficient?
We've been shifting more and more of it to the company that we have, again, but then, that's another, and the issue that we have is, like, right now, it's beautiful, trying to get everything caught up, they can get him here, whatever, we all know it's not gonna stay like this. This year, I mean, it rained until the end of June, I think it's a few before, but then it's packed, so it's, but hopefully, we can get all this done early this year. You know, we have a company that is, we're on the list, prefer he can may, but I don't know if that's gonna happen or not.
Supposed to get cold, it's just not on Friday, so.
What? Don't believe that. Fake news.
I don't think there's no, I don't know, it's not. Oh, you know.
Call it whether it's a winner forty-six or something like that.
And then, Dan, it all, the next two points cover that, for a lot, something I know is probably harder to remove the snow from there, but figure out a way we can get snow out of there, because that can take away spots, especially in the winter time, not getting that snow.
M B T over line.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's the other issue is, you have that one night a week, that that is supposed to be snowing.
All week.
All week. You can't get to move the snow out of there, because you're out moving snow on the streets, you try and plow the streets, so.
And that turns into a rock.
Yes, but that's, that's, we do go up there, when we do Main Street, we try to get as many of the lots as we can, and as much as we can out of there, but that's the only thing that we can do, ever since we can, but the permit parking up there, that's a difficult one, because even on the nights. That is true, because even on the nights that parking lot's empty, that permit parking isn't empty, that stays full, so there's, there's like, goes, that could go two weeks before we can even get in there to plow, because it's, there's too many cars.
So just roll help and roll table out once in a.
Yeah, you know how, like, the upper M B T lot, where to go to pick it up, we can get the main part of the lot, but we, a lot of times, we can never get into that permit parking spot, because there's cars that sit there for, seems like, a week, because I don't know, does that timeframe not count for them?
No, it should.
Yeah, but it, it doesn't, they'll think, and I don't think anybody really understood that even, because when we blocked that whole section of that parking lot off, I think even the officers don't, that's permit parking, they stand.
In a lot of the conversations I've had with folks, it's just having consistent enforcement of permit spots, and that's why some people don't have permits anymore, like, there's people out there, they, they're parked there twenty-four seven, seven days a week, and.
We had a lot more permits sold than we do parking lots, so there's, last year was a record year, it was two hundred and seventy permit parking spots, hundred parking permits, some of them were prorated, I would say, I think we did the research, it was twenty of them that were prorated, which means that it was, you know, a hundred and forty dollars per, per permit, times two seventy.
And how many spots do we have?
A hundred and seventy, it's.
Permit system seemingly, seemingly works because of the rotation, and some would disagree, some would agree, and on busy days during the summer, there isn't spots, so.
But if you do run into that, you can park in the big lot.
Yes.
Which a lot, I realize that a lot of people don't know that.
No, they don't.
It's on the sheet that they get, you know.
But people don't read.
No, they, a lot of them don't. So there's people sometimes, you know, first time people come down, they just park on Main Street, and they're thin, and they don't understand.
They also have stewards lot, very.
Yeah, very rarely.
And Bill, if I'm not mistaken, it's been a while since we've talked about the proratings, and I remember that came to the board, but you can't wait and then hit the busy summer months and then prorate it, can you?
Well, so, so if you don't buy your permit in April, and you wait till June, it's prorated from, from June till next May. Does that make sense?
So it just.
Twelve month.
No, it would be eleven months.
Eleven months, so somebody who gets a job and starts July first and wants to, it'll go to May.
We, we, yeah, it goes till May, that's, that's the cycle that we made. So that gave people time, you know, most of our busy time is summer, Aprils are downtime, people with their permits in April, by then, things start to happen, you know, the, the marathon generally, unless, you know, the first Sunday and June kicks off, and then, or show graduation, et cetera.
So keeping a hundred and fifty bucks this annual, this coming year.
That, that's up to you guys, it's my recommendation, I see Mark has it in here, too, that's down a few, I don't know, you can talk about that, or it's up to you guys. But, but I agree, it should be a week, a hundred and fifty, I know Mark has a thingy here about seventy-five or ways or something?
For workers, but they can't park in that upper M B T lot, they have to park in either the municipal lot or.
Incentivize somewhere else, is that what you're saying?
But that.
Incentivize another location, like they.
Like, that's fine, park up there, you should, we, we don't really want workers parking out there.
I gotta enforce it, it's all about enforcing.
We can change the colors, this lot could be orange, that one could be red.
So, so.
It's my opinion that we should keep that one consistent, I, I get Mark's point, but I, I also see, I agree with a hundred percent on the hospitality rates.
So the other idea is having a, for instance, the House has six permits or something like that, their permit should be a hundred and fifty dollars, when it's going to a different car every night, their permit should be a thousand dollars.
A hundred and fifty bucks is seemingly cheap.
Yes, all seven hours, or three days, maybe.
I mean, but, I think until construction's over, at least for this year, leave it alone, next year, if we do build a parking structure, that is, that's a whole, a ball wax, because we gotta pay our money back, a hundred and fifty bucks is not covered.
Well, maybe, maybe for next year, keep employees a hundred and fifty bucks, and have the house, like, when you said, that's a different rate, plus.
Well, did you do a multi-person pass?
And, yeah, and that's the thousand dollars that, oh, yeah, that's right, but the other one, people asked for, like, a hard recolor to the movie theater, she said she would love to have a business transferable permit, she has people who work one or two days a week.
But that would be a thousand dollars again.
Yeah, that's, she's not gonna pay that.
Well, that's why, that's why we keep it at one fifty across the board, and not say, because we run into a lot of problems, you know, some, now, now you have employees going, well, here's a pass you're working later, oh, I can get it tomorrow, I don't get a ticket, and then we give them a ticket, I think it becomes problematic, if you have a pass and you don't, that's a lot of it.
And plus, if you're gonna charge someone a thousand dollars a business, we should guarantee that there's a spot there, and we can't always do that.
Oh, but, you know, lucky to come down to my motel or whatever, buy, give me a spot, blacktop it, insure it, clean it, save it. I mean, at some point, that's a dirt cheap cost.
Let, let me rephrase that, then we should price it in a, in a grand, that it would justify us making sure that the spot is available, whatever that cost is.
I, I think maybe eventually, when there's the option of a parking garage, and you can have a designated space, but for now, I think, you know, the Bear House and the, the different places that are up there, they're, they're businesses that don't have parking, they wanna provide it to their people, here it is, but, but I mean, I don't think it'll, it'll probably be higher than a thousand dollars to build a garage for a designated spot.
Well, I guess I'm, I guess we're, we're talking comprehensive, we wanna move this year or that, I, I, I feel like this is, this is really big, and I didn't know that we were gonna dive, because there's so many different moving parts to.
You're talking about the.
This, this, this looks to be a very thorough, tight organization of parking, I thought we were just gonna tackle the municipal lot and increase in prices.
Well, you could work that out, but I think Mark was giving a hell of a view of comprehensive.
Because it's like, as you see, it's inciting a.
Right.
Which is good, just.
People, looking at the situation as a whole, you know, parking meters in general, we're always to try to turn spaces, not necessarily generate revenue, but we realize they can generate revenue and keep taxes well, and that's great, but we just have to figure out how they can still turn spaces, and that's where a lot of other stuff comes into play, too, where you have in the years go until eight instead of six. Because right now, I'll be, and I hear that it's not just me, it's other people, for one, we need to improve the loading zone signage, I, I talked to Pat, her eyes, like, it doesn't say that it's paid parking after three o'clock, he lets people park in the loading zone for free.
He did.
And it's all smoke, what's that?
It did. Did it? It used to be a red sign on the top and a green one on the bottom, told to take it down, yeah.
Three o'clock, I was reading that.
There used to be two signs on those posts, one was a red one that said, loading zone for this hour, or this hour, and it said, paid parking for this hour.
And so the problem is now, instead being that customer, I would, if customers could park there for free, that's great, but now it's still the smoke signals employees, and it's the same with, in front of the store, they'll pay fifty cents and put a ticket on the dashboard, and they know for four o'clock or four thirty, that person's gone, so, and the total eight, I think, is gonna alleviate a lot of that, so we'll be able to have customers on the street again, it's not just in front of me, I know, I don't zigzag.
Needs to be extended for the hours, and also something that I've seen since I've been going early in the morning, every morning, to have, at the construction trailers, you wouldn't believe the number of people that pull into the municipal lot, get a ticket, and go park on Main Street and the other lots.
Oh, really?
They're going there and getting a fifty cent an hour ticket, and then they're headed out.
We did have.
Well, you used to, now it's paid by plane.
And that, does that work?
So the paid by plane is, is working, yeah.
I mean, can you park, you go in and get a ticket in the municipal lot, maybe?
We haven't changed that, that was, that was discussion, that, you're supposed to put the arm in there.
So, there's two tiers, and Mindy said that she worked up, but we knew this was a problem.
Yeah.
There was a way.
It's supposed to be zoned, so when you pay for parking, and you pay in the municipal lot, and you park on Main Street, it's two different zones, and the machine is supposed to pick that up, if it's not picking it up, then.
I, I don't know if it is, but I, I, there was people parked at the meters is what got my attention, and I was watching, and I'm like, why are they parking and then going to park, why are they driving to a meter, then going to park in the parking lot, so I, and I was sitting there with Tracy, and I go, they're gonna pull out, and I said, then they pull out, they get, what they do, what they do, and then they pull out, and they come back, and they pull up to a meter, and they do what they do, and they pull out, I was like, they're going somewhere else to park, it's more expensive, I said that, I don't give a fuck about that.
Not working the way it's supposed to, I, I'll have a conversation with A T I and Passport to make sure that it does, but it, they were set up as a different zone, that way they couldn't do that, because we were aware of it, I think it was last summer, they started doing that.
But the, the other point, the other point that we always discussed was putting that arm in there, that was gonna break that problem.
Yeah, we, we talked about that, Mindy had this conversation with me, and the only thing we were worried about is during the construction, and with everything that's going on, it's having that arm in the way, so this is what happened.
Because we talked about.
We had a post-construction.
So. And so I'm all for if we wanna keep working on this, and.
No, I mean, eight o'clock's great, I'd love to move on, maybe even increasing the Main Street rates this summer. Well, I can see if I was to give a, I think you're listening, I think I'll see a little computer and say, thirty-two, thirty-seven times, the two dollars an hour, I would move on to transferable hospitality use or pass this summer.
You mean the H O S K?
Yes.
And they get.
But it's not just the H O S K.
I, I don't know, anybody.
We're saying that, but those, those are the things that I.
In the main law?
And the, the other, yeah, and the other thing that I think we, we need to discuss, and it was problematic last year, is, is the contract department spot, which I see that they didn't have in here, so sixteen dollars a day, you go down to the front. And we, in the past, as we all know, we waived some for not-for-profit places, and then it was abused, from the library, for instance, last summer, it was there for.
Long time.
A long time, and I think we gotta prohibit contractor department this summer.
Or make it so expensive that if you're gonna buy a spot, you're gonna get in and get to work on it.
Yeah.
Or it's one spot for business.
And that, that's pretty inexpensive, sixteen dollars a day, and then they're even there overnight, you know, a garbage bin or whatever, you know, I, I just hate that, I mean, we, we've discussed this for a long time, you know, when there's construction going on, I know, isn't, smoke signals doing it?
Yeah, and, you know, that is, I can't. You know, that's like, these guys don't need their vehicles, have moved to the part, they don't need to be on me.
You got a street a little bit last year, and so, my, you know, right, not every day. And I, I saw that it was getting used, but I think if we then, if we increase that, those would be my three recommendations, I think if we did increase the contract department, so that it does force them to go faster. Sixteen dollars a day is very inexpensive to sit there and.
I mean, you can't prohibit it, because.
So, but it should be, it should be made, because that roof, I'm like, every day, you and I were there.
Yeah.
Fight with it.
You mean my margins?
We're like the cross from county, we're like, we were there for like, forever.
Months. Again, is it the right time to do this with all this construction?
Well, some of it is, like, the transferable pass, I mean, there's just no reason a vacation rental should pay a hundred and fifty dollars a year parking.
And how many are, how many, how many, can they get at her unit?
We're, we've only had a couple, but the problem is, more and more are gonna start to do it, and it brings us back to the other, the vacation rental permit law right now says that if you're on Main Street, you have to provide parking. But not everyone's doing it, and the question is, do we wanna enforce it, and the way we may decide we don't wanna enforce it is, fine, if we're gonna charge for overnight, let's say a dollar an hour, you don't wanna provide parking for your guests, let them just spend themselves, I think, I don't have a problem with that. But if we are not gonna charge overnight, we're just gonna let these people get away with buying these permits, that I have a problem with, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars.
I don't see why you'd do both.
Do which?
I mean, like, they already said, exactly, the body, the tax, and the hospital, like, that's what I'm saying, it's like.
It's that the customer's problem, it's urgent.
Okay, and if that's not what they want on their business.
Free overnight, second, your guy, you're such a person, get this, it's not, you know, if it costs the customer something, Marion may provide.
Yeah, certainly, you know, I, I'm, I'm just. How do you, how do you tackle that, one would be just increasing charging for overnight parking, another would be increasing the cost to the municipal lot, and then increasing the cost to places like the H O S, and I guess the requirement of that, it might be a little.
All we have to decide today is what to do with permits, they're renewing in two weeks, so, that issue, we have to, we have to tackle, the other stuff, we have a little bit of time.
Well, is some of this what you wanna call low-hanging fruit, or something that should be done no matter what during construction, but I think overnight parking in, in the lots should be addressed, otherwise, people that aren't buying it permits, which is violating the law, are getting.
I, I agree, before summer, of course, but today, we don't know what to do about the permit parking.
And we had how many different levels of permitted parking, transferable pass, worker pass, was there another one? Or that's the only two categories?
We had a employee owner.
Yeah, and I, I don't trust the group, but I, I just don't see where we can, I mean, a hundred and fifty is pretty pretty reasonable. Your recommendation, if I remember, is what's that, a thousand dollars a year for a transferable pass?
I mean, they're just throwing out.
Yeah, well, you know, and I don't think it's set in stone. I think it can be something while there's construction going on and then if a garage gets built, it can be readjusted. It's not like we have to leave this forever. If we're here or not.
Yeah, a thousand bucks is covered.
Oh, that's what I mean, but for now. And for a thousand dollars, you're not getting a spot. You're just getting.
You're getting a permit that you can go with on your license plate.
Right.
What if they have, what if they have like three, four rooms that you get? Do they only get three, four passes or?
Well, the house right now, I don't know if they print in their own or whatever, but it's like house one, house two, house three, house four on their little visor thing, so.
I mean, that's something.
We do.
We do. Is that what they're getting? One, two, three?
I, I don't know what, what exactly they're giving that. Something similar to that.
So do we.
It comes with the pass, but they.
So, or I guess going back to your unfortunate component of short-term rentals. Do we have to work if it's on Main Street? You need to procure a parking permit?
Well, that's what the law says you have to do now. But there are people that aren't buying by the law and it's not being enforced. So the question is, if we start charging at night, let's say just throwing something on top of our head, a dollar, a dollar an hour. But if you don't want to buy a pass and you let your people fend for themselves, I, I, to be honest with you, I don't have a problem with that, but we'll have to go back and make a change to the vacation rental law. Or we're going to start making them have it. You know, you don't get your permit unless you pay this, this fee.
So that would be first is low hanging fruit, charge for overnight parking. Increase the overall cost for the municipal lot and then down the line. If we don't see that it's helped correct the situation, then we will be a little bit.
I think either way, if you're going to start charging overnight, you don't think that you now want to make people charge for parking, then we have to, we definitely have to go back and change the law. Cause otherwise we're just not enforcing a law that's already on the books.
That's a very part of the permit process when you get your.
Just like how you should be inspected or anything else.
And you have to buy in the parking. If you don't have parking, if you don't have a private lot behind your business on Main Street or your.
But it is something we as a board have to decide because that's what came out of the vacation rental permit. The village has the right to control some villages, the town, the town. Are we at a point where we think we can, we want to make a recommendation on that? Do we want to make people on Main Street, say from one Main Street to the post office, have to secure parking? Or do we want to start charging in the lots at night and just say, do you want to provide a fine if you don't find?
At least if we made vacation.
The law says no.
But we can change the law. I mean, that.
Why would we change the law? Well, because someone who's running essentially the hotel on Main Street doesn't have to pay for parking and is getting it next to nothing. That's.
Right, but now they're not going to get a hundred and fifty dollar pass. So if they want to buy one for a thousand for now, that's one thing, but if they don't want to do anything, they just let their customer fend for themselves.
The only difference is the charge for municipal lot overnight.
Any of them are, I have. You don't have. Right.
Yeah.
And I, I think we probably come out ahead of the game at that point.
Yeah, I'm going to enforce overnight parking too.
Is that a problem?
So we can start with municipal lot.
Well, it can't be all of them, otherwise they have lots that get, definitely know about and jam them off.
Okay. That makes sense.
First, so now we had talked, did June do an overnight parking? Great.
No.
Cause I know that was something that came up before and I think it was actually.
We talked about changing the municipal to a dollar.
Dollar, that was, it was a dollar an hour overnight. We're talking about the parking lots, right?
The municipal and the upper empty.
Let's everyone think of two dollars an hour. In the lot. Yeah, I think it should be the same as Main Street. That's what I agree. That's what I would.
The purpose of lowering it on Main Street was, was that we were hoping that to alleviate, or turnover on Main Street. Be on the street, people were parked down. Miss a lot and walking and that didn't become the case.
People should feed the meter on Main Street then, if we make the rate the same. That'd be, that's a name, you need a lot.
It hasn't worked though. That's the, that's what we're saying is that.
No, but if you keep the two to six, you can't park there. You have to go to the lot.
Overnight?
Yeah. On the Main Street right now with two to six, if you keep that, it pushes them to the lot.
The only time we can put municipal lot is on Sunday.
If you're that frugal to get up, move your car to two to six to save the money.
Have people park in the street in the summer time, allow that. Overnight.
Yeah.
Well, it's just regulations, but if we can't clean it, man.
Well, I mean, I mean, you could try it and then you'd have to change it if you.
Yeah.
Plus, we're not going to do it till after construction. So we got some time to think on that. You know, we go out there three days a week, that's really not even enough now. That's why I've been going out almost every day because you asked me, you yourself, you said you hadn't seen it. So I've been pretty much hammering it up there every day. Of course, I've been done. We cut back last year and even our most, so. We want to keep up. So we've been, especially with what's going on right now, we're going to be up there a lot. It might only be a bunch of them contracted. Right now, that whole lot is just full of construction.
And, and two more projects are going to start. First, we've got the Link and then the Oval. I have no idea where they're going.
But, but there's no reason that they.
And, and they started, you know, they're there at six thirty and they, I mean, you're going to be, if they start parking there.
Yeah, well, they are right now. That's, and the thing is they're getting in for fifty cents an hour, five dollars all day. These guys are making prevailing wage.
Or to do.
Yeah, fifty dollars an hour. There's no reason they can't pay two dollars an hour to park there. They're, they're, right now, all those people working at the Northwood building are almost half the parking lot.
I think it gives you dollars everywhere.
What do you think? Simple?
I mean, I guess it didn't work to have it forward. Especially people are taking tickets and parking wherever they want.
Well, then you wouldn't need those zones. It was all the same.
True.
True, eighty-two dollars, you can park anywhere you want. Peter, what are you thinking?
I still think we should incentivize people to park in the lots, not in the street.
Day or night or which one are you talking? And if we're talking during construction, what are we thinking about on Hillcrest? Cause that, that would be part of this whole discussion. Are we going to make it? Is it one way yet?
Yes.
Okay. And it, once it's one way, are we going to allow parking on that other side? And are we going to push people up there for permitted parking?
It goes away at summer. Sure, I know it goes away.
It's going to affect the business too, yeah.
But for now, while the street is kind of not a place to park. I don't, I don't have answers.
Let's say we had that parking lane now, you know, it's one way today and then we get twelve inches of snow on Friday, then there's going to be a problem.
Well, I would not add any additional parking where there's no parking on Hillcrest. I would think no parking at all. Where the park, the issue that we had when we started this, remember Peter was, we were worried that where you can park, where you can park up there, there's going to be more people parking there and then walking because there's no sidewalk. So we felt one way would be safer for those people trying to get to Main Street that can.
They can use the empty.
Empty lane to walk. That was the main thing important because you, you know, all them carts are there. If you're trying to one lane and if you're trying to walk over there. And we, and we were making more people take Hillcrest because of this, so we said, let's go one way.
True.
Okay, that's why we did that was that one lane would be for traffic, one lane would be for more walking. As much parking as they can fit in those sections. Um, that's why.
And if you pay attention, there's so many driveways. Basically, the only place you're having is by my house. You would buy at ten, twelve place, you know, this really is not the place you'd even park.
No.
On the street.
What if we take the signs out, they'll park right across every place they can?
Yeah, but they, they block entrances.
Okay, so we're not going to pick up any parking up there. Okay.
Plus you have emergency vehicles that if we did that.
Correct.
You can get an emergency.
What can we decide?
I think this discussion was, we were talking about what curbside parking still needs to be more than the lots. But people are just going to get tickets in the lots and.
Well, it was not a, we have.
I thought we were already doing that. I guess.
It didn't work out, but it's, it can work. In other words, if you pull up to a, a meter, it senses that you're there when you buy the ticket. And if you move somewhere else, it doesn't, doesn't have, or be allowed. The easiest way is go two dollars an hour, have a time limit on Main Street and then go back to the lot, being cheaper if you pay all day. That's what I think we should do.
That's a good idea.
That's a good idea. Got more signage though.
Well, but you, you'd also have that as you drive again, hourly rate is, or you can buy for twenty-four hours or twelve. What would?
Twenty dollars for twenty-four hours or twenty-four? Two dollars an hour, yeah.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Exactly. If you want to stay there and park all the time, then you can.
Mindy, can the meters handle that? She's still there?
It's like she dropped out.
She's down there.
I'm pretty sure they can. Always think you pretty much do anything we want with rates. Especially if we're going to eventually gate the the main lot, then we could do whatever we want. So somebody could come into the main lot or any of the parking lot, buy a all-day twenty-four hour pass, come and go all day and just keep coming back and it would cover them.
Pay my plates on the, who's, they're in there.
Well, then there's another good question. If you buy a twenty-four hour pass, the rates are the same whether you're on the street or not, can they go anywhere they want to park? Oh, but it works. Well, I guess that's a good question because as long as you're buying.
Only for the media lot, for the lots.
But if you're buying a twenty-four hour lot.
Only for the lots, not on the street.
Right, but like, let's say you go into the big lot, you buy a twenty-four hour ticket and then you drive over and you want to run into a store. Does your ticket allow you to park there? Because you can't park at night there anyhow. So you, you know what I'm saying?
It's not supposed to be for Main Street. You're buying a pass for municipal lot because you're getting a deal.
But, but the, well, did we just say it was going to be the same price, two dollars an hour in both places?
If you bought an all-day one, it would be cheaper, right? It'd be cheaper.
Yeah, but if you're only thinking it, what? What were we thinking? How much for the day?
I just said twenty, I threw that out there because I don't think we're going to park there twenty-four hours.
Hey, we got an idea where the.
I'm going to borrow a rate out of you.
Jason?
It's a lot to chew on. This, this conversation's. We're, I feel like we're, we're.
We are looking at.
Rethinking the whole entire parking, which I'm happy to do.
Well, it's not, I'm processing, I guess. There's a lot. It's not the whole thing, remember. We have to do something with this in vacation rentals. For getting away with a hundred and fifty dollars to provide parking for all of us. You know, the transferable pass has to be done. We have to decide, are we going to start enforcing that? If we are, then we're going to have to make it part of the permitting process. If you don't have proof that you on Main Street purchased a parking spot, then you don't get your permit.
I, my, in my mind, I think the easiest thing to do would be to increase the cost of the parking permit for, uh, the, the short-term rentals. One would be to charge for overnight parking. Those would be just very simple steps to do. Um, while we digest the larger issue and then to increase, since a lot of people just park up to that around their church, if we move some of those meters down and we meter parkside up, would prevent, you know, provide a little bit of a. Go over parkside.
No, I, 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 I'm. We'll enforce it if we want.
It's just, it's, if you're extending the meters till seven, then you're catching the people coming up for the clock shift stuff around Main Street. And then they can park.
Seven or eight.
So eight, one, eight. But the whole point is to, after five, it doesn't matter. Pushing them down that way. And then since there's going to be less parking in the municipal lot and Main Street and the beach is always crowded, having a meter will help turn the cars over. So people just don't park. The unfortunate component and then stay at the beach all day.
We never wanted five anymore, you know, meters.
So going to eight o'clock, what's that going to do to the movie theater?
They didn't like the eight o'clock. They go for their stuffs also.
Cause the show starts at seven, they get out at nine. I don't.
Well, so they buy a one-hour ticket. I think that's not, that would be one.
Doesn't allow you to try and be on in pocket. Doesn't allow you to pay if you're on the.
So.
It's like, why is it the movie theory of free parking in other businesses?
No, no, I'm not saying.
That's the reason why it's five o'clock.
That's a great point.
Well, but the same argument you use, the people going drinking in the bars till two in the morning get free. And you go buy a six-dollar beer if you can. Well, the less parking we pay for, the more beer you come by, so. And I think more weight is on. The whole thing you have to think of with this increased revenue is the extra money is going to go in, you know, a, a certain amount has to go towards our budget. It's always been there. But the rest of it's going to go towards Main Street benefit, which we have the fund for now. Main Street benefit can be, do you want someone else on Main Street to keep this clean?
Talking about parking garage.
Well, no, what I'm saying, that's part of it, parking garage. The other thing is.
Parking garage. I thought we were really kind of structured, kind of structured.
The other thing you've got is, is you can ask Brad, you've got a nice new Main Street, but it's going to have a lot more handwork to be done. Well, that was, that was part of the deal though when we did the ball house that that was always said that two people would be hired to go up there and they would concentrate on Main Street with garbage and keeping Main Street clean. Craig was always on board with that. Actually talked with Jim and MJ about that. They are willing to pitch in on that also. To help pay for those two people. He said they have funds. They have funds. Well, with, with, they have the one person, but they will pitch in more for his people. They said they would for that. It may happen one time. But I think also if you're going to hire these people for Main Street, increased revenue will help offset that salary or be that salary.
Sure.
Yeah. I mean, as long as you keep in your mind, you go, yes, you're charging more, but you're seeing a benefit from it.
And it's, and this took a long time for me because I've always like, I worked on Main Street, I lived on Main Street. I do help. But seeing it from this side, it's, this is really one of the only major ways that we can generate revenue for a budget that doesn't rely on taxpayers. And it's, sometimes it makes it easier to make those tougher decisions like, I was thinking parking on, metering parking on upper parkside, like that to me, it seems like blasphemy, but but now just seeing that like cars just camp out there. And it's, people can't get to the beach. And it's, it's like, hey, we have parking permits. Can you just please buy the permit? You're literally right here to here to the store slot, you know, like it's just a couple more steps, you know?
So a lot of this is going to take a lot of discussion, but can we get something done so Bill can print what's going to happen? So a transferable pass, a worker pass, overnight parking. And what we're going to charge at the big lot, those would be the most important things.
The only other thing I'd like to add or just the.
Own area is hard. Yeah, I, I've got that in there, but can we all agree on a transferable pass of a thousand marks? I mean, just for now until the parking structure is, or isn't built? Everyone like that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the worker pass, are we going to leave that?
It's supposed to be regular, I guess we call it regular pass, not necessarily worker pass.
We can change it from one fifty though. We're going to have to raise it while you do a structure. It's going to, the shock is going to be greater.
What's your thoughts?
So this, you're thinking of someone just coming in.
Forty cents a day. So they don't rent.
Oh, yeah. I, yeah, I have a state, have permits, they work. They come back and park, they park over.
You're just thinking about people who actually commute in and have a spot. Is that what you're thinking?
This is where we have a place now.
What are you saying, seventy-five?
Oh, the seventy-five one, but that would be like you would park in this lot if you had proof of employment on Main Street. That would be, yeah, like if somebody were at bookstore plus.
But they're not going to be able to park there at all. They're, they're going to be back home to.
Yeah, they're not, they're.
So you want to keep that permit at a hundred and fifty?
He was asking about the seventy-five hour one. That was just an idea.
You, you want to keep it.
We, we'll have to pay for this.
Yes, but I don't think in two years we should have a gigantic. I think we should go up a little bit, even if it's just twenty-five bucks. Because to make up the difference in two years, you know, twenty-five bucks won't do it, so you'll be going.
I mean, by the way, I wouldn't go down.
Right, yeah.
It's seemingly cheap now. Parking like, like, see this, I already talked to. Extremely cheap as opposed to, you know, and work for a living.
And Dan, Dan's the nice discussion on the seventy-five dollar one, it's not for the upper NBT lot, that would be for satellite spots. And that's the idea, to try to get people out of that one.
And of course you can, we have permitted parking now down at Stewart's Lot, we call it that.
Maybe the seventy-five dollar permit is only good at Stewart's Lot.
That's what, that's what I'm saying.
I could even.
Orange fifty dollars down at Stewart's Lot if you wanted, I mean, that's.
I think what Dave has across the board just gives you the opportunity to park there, up there.
But no one's parking down here, that's what I guess.
No one is.
Then no one won't, they they won't walk there.
Or seventy-five dollars, they're.
Yeah, cause they're gonna be late for work and they're gonna, oh, I mean, people are lazy.
Well, but also, you know, okay, if you wanna give the worker a break, like I said, pick fifty, seventy-five, put them down here. You know, if they're lazy and they wanna pay a hundred and fifty, move up here.
Well, the thing is, right now, Stewart's Lot, that that permit parking that's there was for people in this building, that's what that was put in for. That was a free.
Yeah, but that's on the left issue first.
Yeah, but the rest of that's free.
No, the back wall is not permitted parking.
No, that's, that.
I thought we put that in.
There is some permit signs down there, but that whole lot is free right now. So if you don't wanna pay a hundred and fifty, you can go there to park for free.
But I think we had, am I wrong?
It's the difference between seventy-five and forty.
The back wall is permitted.
The back wall is permitted parking, if you wanna park in those angles.
All those, right.
Free to park there for free and walk up.
But the idea being is if, if they're full, you've got a spot in the back where you can't fill up.
Correct.
And that's the whole idea.
Free people can't sit in those spots, that's why it's worth it. But there's spots that are free and under every day.
Yeah, that that place is also a lot.
And if you work on Main Street, you do not wanna pay even seventy-five dollars, you can park for free.
The diet, they have a great deal, it's free parking.
It took me ten minutes to lock here from the bookstore. But that's what I mean, you could get rid of that back wall glass from it.
All free.
And just let them all park for free, they don't park in time, it's a box, they're not here.
Is it ever full?
No.
Well.
There's times when it is, when it's a event, uh, race marathon, you know, look, those things, it fills up. It it may fill up, but there's DCA C hockey game, that's, that's an older floor place, but still, if people are in here, they're lazy, they wanna be close to me. You know, it's just the nature of the beast, a lot of moving out and you know, parking things and saying, oh, yeah.
Well, and unfortunately, part of that too is the new hotel over here, isn't it?
Well, yeah, it doesn't have enough spots.
The Hampton doesn't have enough spots?
No, it's the.
Oh, hello.
And he also sells some of the spots though, too, doesn't he? He can pay to park there. Well, yeah, but I know he bought, I can't remember exactly, Craig worked to deal with him, but they buy parking permits for their staff.
That's what, that's what that went in on the back wall for.
Well, plus we needed more in case, because we, like you said, we have more spaces than we have, so there's always either the big lot or move down here. You can always find a slide, just gotta keep walking.
Yeah, but that's what they would put in when he started and sold those spots.
Plus we had to take out three from the time station, yeah, the building because of the churn.
Right. So we did an awful lot of talking, did we come up with any thoughts?
Although, I think we, having the transferable permit, I think.
Yeah, good, like that one.
What are you keeping? Are you keeping that one?
No, the transferal permit's one thousand.
Oh, that's terrible, yeah.
And then the worker permit, one fifty? Mark?
One fifty seems fair right now.
Okay, and then same thing down here, what are we gonna do in the Stewart lot? Keep that permitted parking?
Or free instead of those people.
Well, but a lot of it is free, but if you don't and you make it all free, then you've got a hotel over here that's just using free parking.
I don't, I think we just leave it the same.
So it does give you that overflow in case people get pushed this way, they they can find a place. And if we find it's a problem, we can always change it.
Traffic said workers should park there instead of parking in the union.
And then, are you thinking two dollars everywhere?
Did you retire yet?
Yes.
So are we thinking two dollars everywhere? And then, Brad's suggesting what Peter said, then you have a twenty-four-hour rate in case you are an all-day rate.
It says all day on there now. It's it's fifty cents an hour or five dollars a day.
So you're basically, like, you're playing it.
Yeah. And it's, I mean, I'm playing devil's advocate here, a business owner on the street, increasing parking costs right now with the construction for a business on the street, probably isn't a great.
Good idea.
Great PR thing.
Well, that's why, that's why I like the, during the day increase, but the, but charging overnight is something new. It's not really increasing the rate, it's just. It's all became, it came up because Mary, she used to buy parking lots. Did it benefit why?
Well, those weren't the.
Overnight parking on the union lot in the first place. So, I mean, I agree, we should move all this after construction, but this is a, because of the vacation rental issue, we have this other.
Oh, and no, overnight parking, I mean, changing the rates right now, I think, like, what?
But we should definitely have an overnight rate.
Overnight.
So, and and change the eight o'clock.
Yeah. I think that's okay, but to raise the rates to right now.
So we'll have.
So leave Main Street at. And then the big lot, just, you're still gonna leave that.
Fifty cents an hour all night and then fifty cents an hour, totally cheap, but a dollar.
Dollar an hour? Can you have a different, I obviously can probably have something during the day and something at night.
Yeah.
Or a recommendation out day and night, or or twenty, or if you wanna average it out all twenty-four hours per hour.
As far as that.
The big lot, any, any lot.
Ten dollars, because it's five now, right?
It's five all day. It's fifty cents an hour, five dollars all day. You, I mean, if you.
Don't want to set a quota, you know? She wonders how many you're buying all day. Yeah. She's dead on that. I think it's how many it's meant for.
Oh, really?
Down with all those truckers, they're probably.
Yeah.
Those guys are paid hard.
The only thing is, you know, in the conference center, we, you know, an awful lot of people who who won't walk from their hotels and they park there all day for meetings and to charge them and bucks or fifty or twenty, who've, that would just stick in their car.
I go there, it's all the time, I pay a lot more than ten bucks for fifteen bucks.
You complain? You probably complain.
Cost of doing business, that's the thing with any one of them, you go, you go to Lake George, okay, but you pay for parking anyway, like, so much.
We do it. It's gonna be a hell of a lot more.
So for now, before, during construction, we have, in my opinion, in all our lots, we have an hourly rate, a max rate, and is there a difference between day and night?
Yeah. Well, if you're not increasing rates, then we can't charge more. Might as well just keep it the same, right?
What?
If we're not increasing the day rates, then we might as well keep it all the same.
If we went from fifty cents to a dollar in the big lot, do you think merchants are gonna be upset during construction? You said not increasing rates, I think, see, two dollars, if we go to a dollar, do you think that's a problem?
In that lot?
In the, in the, the lot.
Someone's gonna complain about it.
But what would your recommendation be?
Thirty-seven dollars range of complaints. I think we just, in my opinion, we start with. Yeah, I guess. Yeah, maybe a dollar fifty, fifty cents and just kind of, maybe a dollar fifty cents, fifty cents overnight.
A dollar fifty overnight?
No, fifty cents per hour overnight, other than the dollar during the day. Cause that's too confusing.
Split it to seventy-five cents twenty-four hours.
Come out to what?
Anyone good at math? Here's a lot of fifteen.
Seventy-five, I don't know.
What's that?
What are we looking at?
And are we looking to do seventy-five, it's about eighteen, that would be eighteen bucks for twenty-four hours, right? Is that what it's going to be? You just paid it one ninety-five cents an hour.
Twenty-two dollars.
Did we say seventy, yeah, eighteen dollars, right?
And seventy-five cents an hour going to a conference if you're there for ten hours, that's seven fifty, that's not bad parking. Then you elevate the all-day rate, right?
But would become the all-day, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's seventy-five cents an hour.
So what, is it over twelve hours it becomes an all-day rate?
I think there is no all-day rate. Uh, if you're working for twenty-four hours, it's seventy-five cents an hour.
Well, what if you wanna leave your car there for twenty-four hours?
Seventy-five cents an hour.
With the market, it's split between.
So it'd be thirty-six dollars for twenty-four hours, are you saying?
No, eighteen dollars for twenty-four.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's right, I was thinking eighteen was half of it. Once again, it's a starting point. Anyone got any, anyone wanna say anything on that, one way or the other?
We'll see what happens. Some sticker shock.
Well, all you're moving is from fifty to seventy.
You're on the way to see what Mindy said about the all, how many people buy the all-day one?
It would be nice to.
Have the people in the lot pay five bucks, that'd be seventy-five. Oh, no, cause if you're working, it's, you work for eight or nine hours, you can pay ten hours, it's only seventy-five, it's not that much more.
No.
So I don't think there's gonna be sticker shock. Seventy-five cents an hour is pretty cheap. The starting point, and the last one is, but Chief was talking about the construction one, I think you could start charging more for the construction.
We shouldn't let them in there at all.
No, when they're out there working, they should have to pay something higher.
Oh, on Main Street?
On Main, if they're working on Main Street to bring a dumpster in, something, that shouldn't be just paying for that parking spot.
So what do we, what?
Can't that be included in the permit?
It's sixteen dollars. There isn't any permit.
Permit, it's a town permit, this is a village.
Wait, when you're working on Main Street?
Increase.
Village permit is a town.
No, I'm leaving that.
So, yeah. Here, we have Main Street, you can come down here and get a permit as a contractor, and sixteen bucks.
We're talking about that, that's our.
But if you're, you're talking about a building permit, right, that'd be town.
And we.
But they would get it back. I wouldn't think anything to you, I mean, thirty a day, a day for months. I think it would give them a little bit more incentive, maybe, you know, fifty a day or so. Or after a week, it's fifty a day, I don't know.
Or if you, but if you did it fifty dollars a day, you took, took work up there, have dumpster in that thing, you pay fifty dollars for that spot. That would alleviate your problems with the workers there, because nobody's gonna wanna pay fifty dollars for that spot for construction. They're gonna go to the lot, unless they're using their vehicle all the time.
That's the one that we had last year, is people would be like, sixteen bucks a day, I was thinking, I'm taking onto the bill and, you know, but it, you know, and they're thirty days.
They were calling it off when they left.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They were calling the spots out, so they knew they had it in the morning.
So do you think fifty dollars is enough to?
It's way more than that now. I think the other way to help with that is just, you can only get one of those permits for business, you can't have four trucks.
Well, yeah, it's one permit for business, but it goes by the space. So in other words, you have dumpster, it's two spaces, so it's thirty-two a day, right? That's how. I mean, I think, no, or in areas, you have to add deliveries, so they had four spaces most of the time. They're in front of lights. If you need to get the job done, that's what you have to do. You pay four spaces times whatever, not eighteen, whatever.
Were you just saying for?
In my case, they'd probably.
So with the type of seats on Main Street, you were suggesting how much?
I would say fifty dollars a day for space. You know, it's. Or it's a dormouse, yeah.
And that, yeah, increase parking fines, because some might just be like, I'm just gonna have a ticket.
No.
Right.
The type thing, that's, if they wanna call something off with a dumpster, they gotta pay.
Anyone got agreement or disagreement on that?
Me too. Again, we gotta cash around the bill anyway.
And we also talked about expense, extending the time you had to feed the meter. Get anywhere on that one?
Didn't sound like anybody had a problem with that.
Jason?
I I would lean to seven, but because I go to the movies, but I'm here, so. I know, it's always about me.
All right, hold on.
Like, don't you go out there?
Jason, no. I was actually saying that they.
Oh, really?
Some of the locals. So it's, it's only the locals, but it's unforced and that's the key.
It's the locals and it's the restaurant workers, too.
To the use. Yeah.
And are we doing the start time the same, same time?
What is the start?
Nine.
Well, it's ten AM now. Which we have, we, it depends on what's going on.
And is the reason you do that, just because it's not that busy?
The stores don't have until. Yeah.
You're okay, right? I mean, auto, they come down between nine and time, just park, run in. Run to the bank if they have to.
So to recap, we have a transferable pass at one thousand, a worker pass at one fifty. Now, do you have to prove that you're working on Main Street, or can that just be someone from?
It's gonna be an open permit, not an open permit.
Residents as well.
But it's, we just have to be clear that it's going to your vehicle.
Right, but we also get people that will say live in, pick a state, Ohio, and say, or Connecticut or someplace, geez, I'll just buy a hundred and fifty dollar pass, park all summer. We actually do get people doing that, don't we?
Few, not many.
Very few. I mean, it's.
It's more employees and hours.
Okay.
So, rather than corporate language, must be, must live within the village or work within the village.
So if it's only two a year, I don't, I guess it's not a big deal. So one thousand, one fifty, overnight parking in the lots was seventy-five cents an hour, twenty-four hours a day, that we said?
It's just a big one. We were just talking about the big one.
Oh, I thought we were talking about all of them.
No, the other ones are more expensive there.
What, yeah, okay, so it's just a big lot.
So are we charging overnight parking for every lot, though?
I don't think there is overnight parking in all the lots, but up, when there are, they're more expensive on the lots on Main Street. I think they're the same as.
Should all the same as.
Same as the Main Street on the, on the lots on Main Street, it's just fifty cents in the big lot. So you're only increasing now, and you don't wanna lower the other lots.
No, so are we looking at, since, are we allowing them to park over night?
Good, so you, right now, you can't park in the NBT parking lot overnight, correct?
One day a week.
I'm not talking about the permitted spots, I'm talking about the regular parking places.
Yeah, that's only one day a week that you can't park.
You can park there, you're sick, you can stay until.
But you're not charged. So do we wanna start charging? I mean, once again, that's where all the vacation rental people are gonna go if we don't do something.
I would, same as Mindy.
Yeah. Overnight seventy-five cents? And it'll just.
This is all, we gotta run all this past time Mindy to make sure the program is doing stuff.
So we're really not enforcing till like, enforcing twenty-four seven.
We're not, just parking first.
Working early.
Yeah. Well, but with the extra revenue, that's part of where it's gonna go, I mean. And did we get any agreement on the extension of the meters?
How many kind of?
How many times you go to the movie?
Takes it out of the. Trying to throw overnight parking, the meters go on forever. Right?
You mean on Main Street?
We're not, we're not, we're not allowed parking, overnight parking on Main Street, so.
No sense, but, but what we're saying is if you're gonna pay there, you can pay till two.
Yeah.
There isn't gonna be enforcement for it, though. Well, I agree, but during construction, I think it's better here, because people are gonna park on Main Street, they're gonna be in the way of you guys. I think you should, it's the same, it's two years.
As far as.
Yeah, and there's, so in the, so in the NBT lot, you're saying people can just go in there and park overnight for free?
After.
So now the people who don't.
We can change that to seventy-five cents an hour.
Well, getting it is that we don't do that, then anyone that has a vacation rental on Main Street's gonna know that, just tell them to go up there for the night.
Reinforce the vacation.
Yeah, we do, we haven't started.
Yeah, that's the next, so that I can just see if they're just not gonna park over here in the municipal lot, they're just gonna park in other lots.
What's everybody saying for the NBT lot at night?
Seventy-five cents an hour. Give you consistent.
After one time.
Well, one for parking meters. Well, that decent go to eight.
Same as Main Street. But we can change the NBT ones and not change the Main Street, Main Street ones. I think, again, Mindy has to give.
Yeah, I guess at some point, too, we're gonna start getting people confused. Yeah, I guess at some point, too, we're gonna start getting people confused, right?
The bird watching, though. Yeah.
Where am I parking?
College.
Or is it simple, it's after, because we go to 6 now, at the 2 bucks an hour on Main Street in the lots. I mean, just at 6 o'clock, it goes to 75 cents an hour. All the way.
Summertime is the busiest time, it's like, you have to dinner.
Right?
I don't know, I don't know. We charge the lunch people more than the dinner people.
Keep it easy.
Yeah, I guess I don't understand why we charge the people that go in stores and buy stuff, we don't charge people to buy dinner.
Yeah, exactly. Especially predominantly, you know, a lot of restaurants on Main Street. Well, we're keeping the permits the same. We're increasing the cost of the contractor.
All right, well, why wouldn't the rate just stay the same for overnight parking at 2 bucks an hour?
You mean in the NBT lot?
Yeah.
Are you calling, are you saying that's because it's a premium spot?
Right. And we're gonna get people who went to buy those stuff, transferable permits to vacation rentals, because 2 bucks an hour, you know, if you're parking overnight, it's gonna start bad.
You thinking?
Well, go from zero to 2 bucks.
Go to, go to a dollar per hour? Jackie?
2. Stay with 2. Yep. If you can, if you can afford to stay on Main Street, you gotta pay. 2 dollars an emperor. Yeah.
24 dollars.
I.
A lot of money.
That, yeah, I just, I, I love the ideas. I think this is going to end a whole entire community's perception on parking. And, I mean, these things, you've got to go a little bit better. We're good, or I think we're warm, for sure. I wouldn't feel even more comfortable for setting any of your.
What local is gonna park overnight in the municipal lot, or any of the lots? What local? Who doesn't, I mean?
Someone who had too much to drink.
That's an enemy of the purpose. What are you doing, doing?
That's true.
I called an uproar when they started charging safe garbage to stop, used to be free. That was an uproar. Having parking always on seems intense to me.
Look, I could spend 125 dollars parking in Plattsburgh at the airport, don't, I mean.
But yeah, you're 24, you're there.
Yeah, you're right, wasn't even there.
You're not a point.
The other thing you could do is keep it 2 dollars an hour, and just increase the lots end of the street to 8 o'clock.
Yeah, so that's. 9:00 to 8:00, and 2 dollars an hour, period.
And then at night, it's free, and then you go to the municipal lot, and it's 75 cents an hour, and. But if you're on, if you're in a vacation rental and you're gonna park for the night, why would you pay 2 dollars an hour in NBT, you could just, or you could park free at NBT, or down to the big lot for 75 an hour?
Because you get at your place at 5 o'clock, you wanna cook dinner, you don't wanna bother moving your car again.
No, but.
8 o'clock.
Well, you come in to park at the end of the day, you can go for free up there, or you can go down there for 75.
Free at 8:00.
Yeah.
I get you, okay.
It's a start for now, I think, and where we go, and then really pursuing Main Street rentals as this becomes more of a thing. We get ahead of that, and put it in the law, and that, I think, a lot of people can get around.
All right, we'll try to write that up and see how it looks. Some of the, let me pull some of the quick stuff off here. Number six. Hot dogs, and you know where I'm talking about, Jim, you have the plate, where beautification is going to go in and put hay pots. Those are those round pots that have like cloth on the bottom, that just binds to kind of block your quick view. Everyone's okay with that? You remember Jim?
Yeah.
No, no, not, I just, I just want everyone to know.
That makes me a little bit more okay.
Okay, and then the Nikon annual meeting, you're going to have in person for a certain number of people, June 9th through the 11th. Just to let you know, and anyone that wants to go should talk to Anita, she has to book motel rooms, and conference through 11th.
Is this the annual one, did you say?
No, this is, this is the spring one for us trustees, but just to mention it's there. Because that will fill up, is my guess, because I don't, I don't think they're allowing 100% of the people to go, so. And at some point, believe, and I don't, let's say, don't know where, but do you know, Peter, new trustees, they have to still go through the mandatory training? Trevor, you had to do that, didn't you? You first got on the board?
I don't think it was mandatory, but it was helpful.
Yeah, you had to.
Really?
Yeah, because you went on when I went on, we had to go. It was during that spring thing, and it was like an extra thing, you had to go to another spot, and you had to go, and they took attendance. I don't know if they still do, but.
It's so beneficial, that I didn't even think, it was like, it was a no brainer to go. To really make some connections, understanding it's. It's worth it.
Yeah, it's good.
Crazy world of New York City.
And then the other one on here was cameras on Main Street. We're talking about down the road and right now, one down the road, and I've already talked with Bill. Go up on Main Street, let us know where you want cameras, because when we do Main Street, we're going to be clean conduit in. And if we know where they are, we can have, what do they call it, stub off?
Yeah, we just.
Hold on, it'll be on the light bulbs, and the bell bells.
Okay, so that's where you decide where.
Conduit's there.
You need angles.
So then you'll have power, and you'll have fiber optics, so you can run these cameras, bring them back to the police station, take them down to the firehouse. My opinion.
And we're looking at the, for the table over there.
All right.
For the conduit layout. Kimball thought it can accommodate all of it.
Okay.
The cat six and the power in. We want to, the only thing I would say, when we initially talked about cameras, it was to overlook mid part, because there was such a significant investment to ensure that there wasn't any vandalism. I guess I'm a little apprehensive to go full board cameras up down Main Street, I'd rather provide, use that bandwidth for, maybe like free Wi-Fi.
Good. Well, we can get into that afterwards, but right now, as Bill or Chuck will point out, if there's an incident on Main Street, now they're spending all their time going to store, 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 trying to find the cameras, so they can find out what happened. And I know we brought this up, you were on the board there 10 years ago, everyone had this huge privacy issue, but I think by now, people are so used to cameras watching everything they do, I don't think it's gonna be extended longer.
It is, and you have to put up a notice anyway, so it's not like people don't know you're not.
You're on camera everywhere.
I mean, if someone backs into your car and slams it, please don't be able to go and look and see who did it. If there's a fire out on Main Street, police, firehouse, be able to sit there and look and see how congested Main Street is, if an ambulance has to go up. I mean, there are some, I mean, we're not there yet, but I just wanted to mention that we will make sure that there's fiber optics there, so we can do that, and there's power. And then the other question that's been brought up, do we wanna put some cameras up on Main Street now, so that people can watch the construction? Temporary cameras, believe it or not, people are asking.
Perfect segue, I think they would prefer a park that, if there's a possible that, they could sweep it more often. And that's, I'm getting some feedback about it being really dusty up there, and there's nothing you guys can really do, it's like, especially up to the second floor. At the end, at the end of the day, people are starting to have to clean up those.
Well, that's, that's not because of the construction, that's because of the road being cut.
That's the destruction.
Yeah, so.
Is there any way that?
Like I said, it's been up there every morning, you go back up tomorrow morning, you go up and down the street. We are, we're going up and down the street with our broom, but tomorrow, we're gonna try to put the broom up with the cutter.
Okay.
The problem is, is the dust right now that they're creating is coming out of the asphalt, it's from cutting the street, and it's, then when it dries on the surface. Because it's abnormal.
And that's a wet saw, too, isn't it?
It's wet when it goes out, but then it turns to like a rip.
I was guessing, it could have been a lot worse.
Yeah. And they were cut, so.
It needs rain.
Yeah.
Is there, is there anything, multiple people have come up to me, and I'm like, is there a token, like sort of gesture we can make to Main Street, just once in the evening time at the end of the day? And then once in the morning, is that possible?
You can't go through there, I can go out, drive, and that's it.
Oh, okay.
Well, it's something, Brad's sweet. Something Brad and I talked about, too, is store owners could go out, sweep their sidewalks into the street, and then go get at it with the street sweep.
Yes, that's for the stuff on the sidewalks, but right now, the only, the only thing we can do is, and they are, where it is, is, we're gonna have to wet it during construction, a very good day.
I think the construction.
Yes, we're gonna, that's, that's being talked about, but right now, with the dust issue, is because of the cutting of asphalt. It makes a real fine dust, if you're going through, it's concrete dust.
Yeah.
It's brick dust. Not the dirt, that's why it's the way it is, this isn't really dirt, it's gonna be, once they get this cut, and they put a lot of asphalt, it's gonna get bad.
And the snow will help keep the dust.
But it's not.
1 to 3, 1 to 3 in a row, so, tomorrow is our last dry day, and then we're gonna not have this issue.
So, right now, you're coming around in the morning, and then, if it persists, like.
They'll have the water to wet the road, because.
The truck channel, probably the driving, is in that one lane. Yeah. So that, I'm just, I, like, I don't know the logistics, all I know is that, from what I'm hearing, it's just like, there isn't a complaint, because it's just the season, things drying, they've been saying. And then construction is just, what can we do from a municipal point to not get rid of it, but just minimize it a little bit? Sweeping in the morning is one.
That's the only reason right now. The issue right now is, is, it's almost impossible to sweep other than the travel lanes. Because you have to dismantle, you don't have to dismantle, because the dust is everywhere, and you have a whole barricade of cones. It's just, they can only jump behind in the sweep, and then jump on the side, and then, over the weekend, we swept it all, I don't know if you noticed, but they were up there sweeping parking lots, trying to get as much dust as we can.
Yeah, and I noticed you were doing the side streets, too, so it's like, there's a lot going on.
Yeah.
It's always, yes.
But as far as if it's really bad, the only thing you can do is, get the water truck here sooner than later, and it's gonna be a mess, until they get, we have one more day of cutting, it'll be public work.
Okay, finishing up cameras on Main Street, do we wanna put a couple of cameras up there, so people can watch what's going on, or not? I mean, these won't be fiber optics, these will be probably a Wi-Fi camera. Do you want at least?
I think it's time lapse type thing, is that what it is?
Do we want Scott Wilson to please find out what it costs?
It's pretty inexpensive, we've done them for the construction projects at the venues, and people do go on the website and look to see, I mean, it is kind of cool. But. But it's inexpensive.
Yes, no?
I'm indifferent. You too, I mean, you need a lot of them.
Any.
Who was new, brother?
We're talking, you can see both directions.
Just so you can see, watch, if you have a thing for watching.
Put it on there, that should be, it's like you can see a huge area of both directions. That's what Scott's looking at right now.
Two different locations, or three?
Two different locations right now, that's what we told him, just to start with for the construction.
So where is this webcam we're gonna land on the village?
Get on that home page, I would say. Should we get them to go and try?
But how, how is the, the weather, is it held in space, Wi-Fi based, or cell based?
It'd have to be Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi based, yeah.
Where's the receiver?
The beach house, he's gonna try to see if he can leak it into the beach house. Yeah, get something on site to the beach house, and then just dump the other one off of that, apart. That's what he thought he could do.
Well, we can at least let them see what you can or can't. The other thing we, I had on here was, they're asking for these onto the destination management plan. Already on the roof support.
Haley already asked. I said yes.
The girls' club?
No.
This is 2021.
It's just a club.
No, then we still need to talk about parking fines.
No.
No fines?
No.
Okay, we're done. We'll get to that later. We did have a, maybe someone could produce a schedule for you, because we did have a schedule of all the different fines, and we did have previous discussions over here at the time of watching the news, but we did.
We've been talking for years to increase the fine. Go from the head of the line around.
Would you like that job, too?
We did agree with this one.
Just take a look at fines.
I mean, fines are part of the whole.
No, we changed the law last year, two years ago, so that we can, we don't have to have a public hearing, and public, because it's a.
We can use a public.
When you look at all.
Now we're allowed to do it. So the excuse back then, is we just have a lot of.
Okay, is everyone aware of the number nine, the unsafe building law? We're trying to mirror, remember it came up, we're trying to mirror the town.
Did we pass it?
Well, I think we asked Janet to look at it, but, did we pass it, or did we?
No, we didn't even, we, we're gonna give it, Craig was gonna give it to Janet, but she didn't.
Okay, but that is something we want, we want to enact.
Yes.
We couldn't word for word take the town's law.
No?
No. Okay, we had a copy of it back 3 or 4 months ago.
All right, I'll make sure Janet knows that. And then, there's two requests for benches.
Nice and easy, Doug, that's a good choice.
Yeah.
There's two requests for benches, did that come to the board, or did we approve that? I can't remember.
Mr. Lamb, Joe Lamb's parents?
Right.
We thought, it's Main Street, but I told them, we don't know what kind of benches, it's gonna be granite bench, or iron bench, or whatever.
It'd be granite. We used to, you had two spots, right?
There's various, yes, we have two benches down there that aren't created now. But, they weren't talked to Main Street.
What's that?
No, no, it was just, we had locations, we could.
That's trenches around the way.
Right. As far as Main Street, we don't know what we're gonna use for benches.
We don't even know.
No, but these are.
Joey's, like, the higher potential, it's like, you know.
Well, we have to.
Okay, all, you know, the bench, you don't want to put it.
Well, it's true, but then, maybe we should wait till the end, ask who wants to wait, who wants to be known, because there's nothing saying we can't have whatever, on Main Street, we decided it could be.
So you're saying you have the spot now?
Yeah, we have another spot around the way, this, put another bench in, it's a big cap, bench, so. And we could probably, if we're gonna do that, we might as well go up there and see if they're all laid out roughly the same, and then we could probably add a third one, or a second one, between.
So we can have it now, or later?
Yes, if he goes now, he can have a granite one. And then grave it, if he gets on Main Street, we could, it could be one of those benches, is a memorial bench, it could be totally different than the old, I don't know what we're picking up there.
Which brings up a question of, do we wanna have memorial benches on Main Street, does it become kind of a graveyard? Just, just throwing it out there. Well, let's, let's.
We've always had a rock with a bronze plaque.
Let's leave that for another day's discussion, but for now, Joe, and I can't remember the other person's name, I assume we're gonna just wanna approve those, they'll have to come to the next board meeting, but.
I haven't heard of them, but, yeah.
It's.
It's for Winnie and Vera.
It's apparently.
Okay, and what was the other one?
Oh. I thought I had that with me, but I don't, I'll get the names of that. I didn't know the name, but Craig did go through Ruth, and Ruth did know the person, said she was a prominently classed person, did a lot for like class. But I'll, I'll get that, at least you'll have it, you'll know what's coming up, you can read it, the board fact, and we can decide on it one day. That sounds good. Uh, let's see. So, Jason, it's up to you if you wanna talk climate smart tonight, or?
You know, I, I thought we were gonna take upstairs where I could have plugged it into the TV, and it just.
Maybe we can only do this next time if you want.
It's, there's, I'm gonna, I'm talking for the town, we want to have a combined task force. It really isn't, we're not spending any money, so I'm just gonna preface, we're only collecting what we've done, and anything that we do, moving towards the certification through the DEC, it's, we're going, we're halfway already to bronze, without really kind of doing a lot of work, with no cost. We get up to 120 points, we become bronze certified, just like Central Creek is. I'll, I'll do a little presentation, it's not gonna involve any work from anyone, I'm already, Peter and I are talking with Kimball, and we're gonna work with the town, where you have the joint line. That's about process. So we'll have a list to update, so on and so forth. It's, it's really, it's tied into green, climate, climate, making green energy, we already have two car chargers, or two sessions, we have other sort of.
The EV, or the.
Yeah, the EV, yes. And I have, I can share. And I can share, and I can share with you the, um, the, this Google sheet within the Google Drive, so it's, I can do a better presentation, but it just. So, do you want, two weeks from now we'll be upstairs, you wanna do it then or what?
Sure, or we can actually bring a smart board in here for you next time.
Either or.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll just table that, you're already doing, working on whatever it is anyhow, so. Okay, uh, the other, the other thing, number three, we kinda jumped over that. That traffic study for West Valley was recommended by the joint review board, anybody got any thoughts on that or?
Traffic study? What do we need to study?
No, see how many. So. Obviously, there's two new projects going up on the hall, and, um, Rick Thompson, who's the new chairman of the board, um, drove by, and on the northbound side of West Valley, there's no speed limit signs.
Send it in the town, Doug.
No, even in the village.
They're closer to the entrance.
City.
Yeah. A lot of us thought of it.
Today, Bill, I didn't.
Yeah.
I didn't see them, but I, I may have mistaken, then the southbound, there are two signs, one at Nanny's, and then again entering in the Snowfield, where it says thirty, uh, which is the, the town, right? Both towns, but I, so there's, and they're also talking about lowering the speed limit because that is, you know, it's not thirty, it's forty-five, you know, as people are. Meaning.
It's a lot.
Thirty-five, there was a trip route by horse today.
I didn't.
It's thirty.
It's thirty.
But people.
It's thirty.
Um, so the speed limit sign for the village is at the entrance of the village by Hojo, when you come into, you know.
But it, shouldn't it follow West Valley?
So I.
And then, well.
On the order of West Valley, as you start to turn, I believe there's a sign on the right.
There couldn't be, but you're in the village, unless it's marked otherwise.
Well, but here's something now, today got my, started thinking, so there are posted signs going up, um. Greenwood and Acorn, and it says twenty-five miles an hour. When you go into my development, which is Blueberry Hills, it's thirty. So, and that, okay.
Yeah, but I don't agree, I don't agree with it in Acorn or posted correctly.
Hopefully, they have a forest under thirty anyway, because that's what.
I think they'll put it up way back just to try to slow people down, but they all thirty in the village. Yes. Those signs are all saying that, but the speed limit is actually thirty miles an hour. I think picture.
So who knows this?
But it's.
So can you drive thirty and do you have to drive twenty-five?
You can make it thirty miles an hour.
Well, so anyway, talking about West Valley and obviously, so it was the board's consensus that we take a look, but most of it's in the town, so they're hoping that the town would.
Well, we've, we've pushed for adding the speed limit lower on the backside, like you should break one of that forward, at J and those guys lowers in twenty-five, because that makes sense either. Very similar to that, similar to what you're talking about, yeah.
When people go into Central Creek, cut through that way.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I just, one, I guess where you're going to, there's gonna be major development, and then you talk about all the kids that get dropped off every morning going up, coming through, this is gonna be the biggest mess, once those developments, unless there's some sort of like.
Yes.
Understanding of what's transpiring and what's going to be there.
Well, like Emily and I were talking about, you know, sidewalks.
Sidewalks, yeah, and that may, West Valley is going to be, I don't think the sidewalk's already very exact, yeah, the sidewalks, we're really gonna have to develop. And that's a large. It's so dangerous walking down that way.
Well, bicyclists, I mean, it's unsafe, it's nasty.
It's ready for that next, I see what you're saying, it's ready, it's gonna be developed, might as well be developed all the way. And that's. Sidewalks, I, maybe the other side drops off. Side one, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I know the CDC is working on the sidewalk, like, so, where they don't connect, trying to figure all that out.
From where?
For the whole village, yeah.
CDC?
Like. Community Development Commission.
Oh, Paul Smith graduates, is that?
I'm not sure Paul Smith is involved, I'm a part of the service.
This has to do with.
Agent Tyler Law.
No, they're trying to connect all the sidewalks. Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it makes total sense, it's, it's getting developed.
We had a grant, we did a bunch of sidewalks, state routes to school.
Down in front of. It's not a guy expensive and a pain to go through.
Well, we, we put all our sections in, it was a joint thing between town and village, and town pulled out, we almost had to pay our money back.
Yes.
Town didn't follow through with their end of it.
And that was second elementary school one, where we did it down.
Well, we did, uh, Station Street, we did McKinley Street, uh, and the rest of the double hills, whatever it's called over there, with Colton.
Yeah, Colton, yeah, I'm all into that one.
And then when they did that reconstruction, they continued it down to the elementary school by Brandon Madison's house.
But then, yeah, so one of his town, I think was that, West Valley was on theirs and.
Was it going directly away?
Yeah.
No.
It was never installed.
It was very contentious too, because we, it was expensive, we would have had to pay a lot of money back.
Yeah.
Somehow they worked it out.
Can I bring up something that, um, I know is gonna make a lot of people nervous, but.
We were talking about.
Yeah, I, no, this, no, this is really gonna make, so, um, after the election, I got a, a Facebook message from Don Beany, and on River Street, Old Mill Con Drive. About water in his basement. And what could I do as a newly elected official to make?
Ten years ago, I have to say, twelve years ago.
No, see, I told you it was gonna make you all grimace, so.
He says, there's old French drinking drinks in his basement, he claims that he never had water.
Yeah.
It's all corroded, polychlorine. He's always had. How to deal with the construction?
Yes, he blamed the construction and that, you know, no, no study, water management study was ever done, and now his basement floods, and what are you gonna do to fix this? I don't know.
Is there anything we can, is there like one thing we can do?
We went and dug his whole basement out. By buckets, carrying a tamable of crushed stone, put it in his basement, but the, the pipes that we dug out of there were all drainage pipes going out that had collapsed over the years, the whole area right there is so full of water, and when we, we throw well points in the street to get the sewer down into the right depth, the water shut off. What does that tell you? It wasn't water recreated, it was groundwater, we were pulling the water out of the ground, it went away. So it's groundwater, that full area that you go up, anywhere on Spring Street, anywhere, uh, on School Street or those areas, it's full of water in all the basements.
And it, his was the only house that flooded, it's, that's it.
He, he claims the old sewer line had holes in it, ruptured and took all the water from the ground. So when it's replaced, that didn't happen. Were there any of that true, everybody?
Yeah, it was well before.
Anyway.
Okay, I didn't like the.
I brought, I'm looking at you.
Yeah, looking at.
No, I, I, no, I talked, I talked about it too, it's just. Outside town, like.
Yeah.
And it was in kayak, what was that?
Stretch.
That's that part.
Oh, okay.
The only thing I have, though.
Yep.
Is at the end, very end of Main Street.
Are we getting grimaced?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Going down, we already drive, talk to you a little bit about this, you know, that one entrance in the sidewalk is like this, I wanted to extend the project, now we'll tip that sidewalk.
Swiss Acres. Or Swiss Road.
Yes, to Swiss Road, so.
So what you do is let, raise the whole road then?
Yes, we'd have to raise the road, raise some drainage structures, raise the sidewalk, that whole level, all the way down past that entrance into Swiss Road.
Can you do with that a cost?
Yes, looks, well, this is just rough numbers, it'd be about two hundred thousand dollars to extend this project. That's what it.
And I'm assuming that's a cheaper price than if we didn't already have the people here working at.
Does that include meters that we can put all the way up to?
I have ferment parking on that.
Oh, beyond the ferment parking, up to the cottage.
So, wait, you wanna go down the Swiss Road because the lakeside, the waterfront building, the sidewalks.
You can easily get over that sidewalk, it's right there.
Yeah.
Well, it was looked at, it was never added to this project, I went up and I looked at it, shot some grades, and one foot of raising that road takes that whole thing up stat. So we looked at the other side of the road, um, it makes the entrance to Swiss Road less steep, and it also gets us to that, but it also adds, I think it was like four hundred feet past where we ended, maybe a little farther than that. Because we have to take the road back, get past Swiss Road, but I just wanted to know if that's something everybody wants to look at now.
So what's it going to do to the cottage?
It won't, it'll stop.
It'll stop.
No, not the cottage, the cottage, that little house right.
The garage thing.
That garage thing that.
Nothing, we, 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 again, you stop right there, no.
Oh, yeah.
It'd be, it'd be, look, general brand, so to speak.
And there's a drainage structure right there, so we ran it back.
You can, you can think of one Main Street, that intersection, that's real brand, it's just extending it out, it'll drop down later on, you can think of it that way.
My question is bureaucratic one, I mean, with the grand, grandest Main Street, and it's like averaging all state highway, and then we're going through the village road.
Well, it's, but we already are down into the village road, like almost four hundred feet, we're just going another.
With the drainage?
Yes, the drainage is already there, we're not adding drainage. All it is, is, all it would, the ma, the big thing is gonna be the regrading of, um, nineteen hundred square foot sidewalk, that's, that's a big.
So the drainage on Swiss that comes down doesn't go into what?
Right.
No, drainage, the drainage that comes down Swiss Road now goes across, goes down towards the cottage into a vortex unit that's between the cottage and that little one.
I believe.
Yeah. But the two drains that are there now, they're, they're putting in two new ones at the end of Main Street at number one park. But they're headed down, then we're gonna have to raise those other drains, because if we raise the road, but it gets rid of that whole section of sidewalk, and then we actually carry the brick down, it would be to Swiss Road.
And it also, are they still, the, is that the lake house they call it, I don't know what they call it apart down there, is that also still going to come out of the intersection at one Main Street or what?
Yes.
So if we did raise this, it would actually help that one, but it.
Yes, well, that, that section's being raised.
See, it was gonna, but it would just carry it on further, for.
Yes.
Right, and then once you get down to the other part where it's like this, that won't be there. And the other thing is, A, you're getting this cheaper because the construction equipment's already here, B, it'll be on that, can you put it in that thirty year loan interest rate? So there's some real incentive, if we're ever gonna do it, to do it now.
So the sidewalk would be replaced with the papers or it would be the new set book?
Well, it's. It would be papers, it would be the dark colored papers.
Charcoal.
Oh, the charcoal, okay.
Yeah. They say it's turning down.
Did anybody from Gilane get ahold of you regarding this project to give you samples? The papers, because they had something totally different in there for the oval in the form in front of the thirty-two ring. So at worst. Yeah, right? So you did. Okay.
Paper sawing a part two.
Well, you know, we won't be replacing papers for probably another year and a half, but. You know, it's gonna be red brick, and I'm like, uh-uh, I don't think so.
Yeah.
I bring one other thing that came up in the LPBA meeting today.
Do that.
Main Street related, one of the building owners at Flank had run, that you've heard, and we have talked about it a little bit, whether we might have put infrastructure in for heated sidewalks, and what kind of process that.
We talked about that.
Without you having a little time, a lot of discussion from.
No, no.
On the building owner.
Well, we talked about it, and right now, the, the issue that we have up there, when we started talking about this again, when we looked at it, is the brick is gonna be permanent, there's gonna be a sheet of heavy gauge, like liner, that goes from the building out under the sidewalk, how far down?
Stone.
Foot under, foot underneath the sidewalk.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the issue, you're, I don't know if you could put this heating as deep as this is gonna have to be, will it heat through all that material to get to the surface?
What are the four inches right to?
Yeah, well, where it is now, it's just underneath the brick, like at the beach house. It's, it can't go just underneath.
Smoke signals.
Or like smoke signals, see, that's an issue we're gonna have right now, because I don't even know how we're gonna put smoke signals back. Because I don't think that was looked at.
Well, I just need an explanation, so, and that's a good explanation.
I mean, we, we really did look at trying to. We looked at it a hundred different ways, we're not so sure that you could put that electric mat in that stone underneath.
Well, so it's pinch signals and pipes.
I know, but it's still, we don't, where's it gonna go now?
Yeah. Heating sort of?
Yes, yes, they have. Probably like all pipes, they're going to an electric boiler in the basement, they have a circulator pulsed, pulsed through, which is a way, it's a much more durable system than electrical mat, but. Our issue is, is we, we, we talked to a couple of people again, and they just said that it's gonna be a nightmare to try to piecemeal this through, because it's gonna have to basically go underneath.
Or you're gonna have electric mats and an electric mat, red dyes, now you got a section that's not, you can't pull. It's hundreds already.
Grandos replace them.
Yeah, I know. I, I don't know if you could put it in the stone bed, that's the thing, because you're supposed to put those electric mats in.
You're gonna have to stop doing the sidewalks.
Correct.
Maybe we should contact them.
But I, how are you gonna, I mean, we talked with that guy that. We were, we were just worried about where it would be, and they told us that they don't believe that the amount of heat from the distance, you have to put it underneath, because.
Who's, who are you talking about now?
That's it?
Or John?
Yeah. That's it, and so we, but I mean, if you wanted to start looking at it, but this is like, we're so far behind now, if you're gonna try to start talking about this, this is a nightmare. Because of all the information we did before, if somebody wants to put, like, him, Flink could do it, because there's no, nothing current going in front of Flink's building. Does it stop just before there? The granite? Yeah, then it goes back to bricks, so.
Does it?
Yes, so I think Flink could, I think that stops, I haven't looked at it. Yeah, I don't, I don't think that you can put it underneath and you can have somebody tell us it's gonna work. Yes. I don't know.
That was a long discussion in the summertime, went from hydro to electric to.
Oh, we won't go to that.
From, from the arena sway to heat to, we, we looked at everything, nothing.
Ivan, the project manager just kept on that good sound.
Peter and Brad, if you're deciding it's not gonna be done until next year anyhow, like. And Northwood has heating mirrors now too.
They put. In their entry point.
Yeah.
And on the sidewalk.
I guess it doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
So, I apologize, like, send all, it's getting late, I had someone reach out to me about one Main Street, and they weren't terribly happy about the staging, what was the benefits again of allowing the construction company to stage in one Main Street park?
We must stage.
Stage, stage their equipment, park the, the large equipment there.
It works.
I, I, like, I'm just, I, I need a refresher as to, yes, I voted for this, this is the reason.
Jason, they're putting vortex, that's what the equipment's there, it's not staged, they're putting vortex in.
But we're allowing them to keep their, their equipment there. It's the, it's the water's.
Fire retention.
It's totally different.
Okay.
But that's checking that, many of the huge equipments and. So we. It's, it's waterline and all the fire retention for them somewhere. Yeah, I just needed a refresher, because I knew that.
The conversation is he, think that, what do you, you mean staging?
You and I can have a conversation on that, but it was just, there's one park, isn't, one Main Street park, isn't going to be one Main Street park, this person just found out, they're wondering, I was, before I responded, I want a refresher, because we have a meeting a month ago, a month and a half. We decided to do that because of all this kind of work. We talked about, that next September should be bad.
No, the meeting that we had a month ago, what that was to do was whether or not we were going to allow them to work in for one park in July and August.
Yes.
That's what the meeting was.
Because all the heavy work will be done, it'll be to sidewalks, the walkways, the landscaping, all that stuff. So it'll be done, we should be ahead of schedule.
Correct.
Because, yeah.
See, the reason that they asked to work there, because what they're gonna do from now to the end of June will have the park torn up, they don't work there July and August, that means the park sits there torn up for two months.
Yeah.
And then they come back in the fall, so you, you basically lose the park probably even for first part of next year, so if they can work in there July and August, but as far as staging equipment, they're, they're actually working, they're not staging, they're, they're working.
So they miss the, the.
Yeah, when you use over at Stager, you mean parking it there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's still situated.
Definitely, so it is, they're working there, but they're leaving the equipment there, I think that's.
And you're saying the person probably has a sign that lost the park, they're gonna lose the park.
Exactly, and that, and that's, and that's like, yes, and I have, I have no problem saying, yes, I did vote for this, yes, this is the reason why, this is going to be the benefit, it's going to benefit the whole, that much more significant. This is going to be the benefit, it's going to benefit the whole, that much more significantly.
You're not gonna lose part, it'll still be there.
Better than. Oh, yeah, 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 but I'm just saying, we, for this, the use of this summer and fall.
Yeah, summer, this.
And here's the rationale, because I know we had that conversation, and.
I did, this would be a psychology. And it's, just said if we don't work in July and August, and there, it'll just prolong how much longer they don't have.
Yeah.
That was just more of a refresher for me, because there's always so much information out, anybody else that's not six yet? Kimball, you still there? Kimball?
I'm still here, I'm multitasking.
Finally asleep, uh, just tell us what you're doing on Merill Lake Drive.
Certainly. We are shooting for next Tuesday, to get rid of approximately, well, I think we're gonna have to wait a little bit for Spectrum to come along behind us, they never completed their work some twenty years ago, but, um, we should, I think I calculated eleven poles that can hopefully go away this summer, so, um.
This is the job that we started tonight.
So.
Is this what Patrick, Patrick is mapping out right now?
No, no, this is, what it is, is we have to take advantage of the Merill Lake Inn shutdown that happens next week, so, we get chances a year to do it, and this is one of them, so.
Yeah, this, putting the poles on the ground, this goal from the, that one line, all the way into the Merill Lake Inn. Now, we planned for years and years ago, when they put the new sidewalk in, when they put the water main under, underground, that was all part of the plan.
Because the Merill Lake Inn's shutting down, it's the time to do it.
It's part, a part of the job, you can get it done.
Yeah, so we require an extended outage from the Merill Lake Inn, so we couldn't really do it when they were full operation, so.
I'm good.
Then I may add a little bit more, you know, less mad when we put meters all the way up to the cottage.
So that, time to go.
All right, here's go.
Yeah.
See how much we got studied?
Anything else?
The only thing is, is we, if we're gonna do it next quarter.
Are we moving with the two hybrids?
You should get moved along.
The two hybrids. He's, he's already, not have a page.
I mean.
Are we able to?
Yeah. See, like, where you run. You can put your base layer, you put a layer of sand, right, that layer of sand, that mat, and we did board up. We can, such as one, but that is hybrid, so that's all, then the brick goes on, it's just like, we're sanding. This is gonna be that line, and all this certain toast, that is here. Let the water get out into the.
Oh, so.
So I don't know, I think there was like a hazard.
Twenty-five, there's one on the budget, so.
Will that be in that, be able to, ready through this much gravel, we can set up the brick. The big ones already, so.
One, we're gonna make Kimball, there was another guy working on the.
Say on a day during the.
Essentially enough, so.
There's gonna be a kit that's, that needs electric, or it's gotta have so much electricity.
And they electricity that, they'll use.
Since we have a church in a station. Yeah. It, it's already there.
No, it's gonna be installed, and then if you're gonna.
That's part of the cost.
Cause I, I, hold on, is it, if we take it, now, if we take it, now, how are we gonna deal with the smoke signals, they'll be lodged, they don't know it's there. So, we. Is it, that probably gonna have to be removed. And lowered. It's gonna be.
And then you don't even know it's gonna work.
Yeah, it's a lot harder, we gotta go up with that bedding here.
Anyway, I'd like to talk to the contractor, the sub, who's gonna be doing the sidewalks, and see if there's any way to do.
Yeah, but they're not the ones that would be on the electric. If anybody wants to do electric, they're gonna have to go get who they want to be installing this electric, and they talk to, to Berkey to say, yeah, we want electric, and this is how much, this is what we're gonna do with, where it can go, we just wanna talk to them and see if it's gonna work or not, though, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's way down, it's foot below the top of brick, you're never gonna get the heat out, it's gotta be near the.
Yeah.
Near the stone. Otherwise it's.
So, so with that, if it's in the stone, that means it's in that, into that liner area, so, and, but, my whole thing is, it's stone, you don't, the mat, and the sanding. Well, I, I mean.
Something number three could look into.
Yeah.
No, I'm just. Aren't you relax? One of you guys could be, we're down, we're arguing. No, we're in. Yeah, nobody's. If you can just leave it up to you, I'm about to come, Art, what? Well, what is this, do we wanna, did you have a conversation with people about the two, uh?
Yeah.
What's that? Cause one, cause one is already budgeted for this this year, we're looking, wants to do two, like.
Why don't you two talk, Kimball, we can, you know, meet.
All right, so, we, we've chatted with them, and it's really kind of whether, waiting to say, hey, this makes sense, I'm three or so, it's.
That's great.
He's already had one, he's already one budgeted, so it'd be another one for, for sign up for three years, so it'd be.
Yeah, so.
Well, if you look into it, it says it can't be done, then as we know, it can't be done, what?
I'll send you a link as far as the.
Okay.